Good evening and thank you for viewing the October 19th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. First item of business is a land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Weot tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Weot language as gudini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Passed actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Weot and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Weot community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. If you would like to, please join us for the flag salute. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Stillman? Councilmember Watson?
Not on Zoom yet, I'll bring him in if he arrives.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. If you wish to make a comment during the meeting at either the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you're here in person, you'll line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you are logged on to Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on. If you are on the phone, press * 9 on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial * 6 on your phone. For each item, we will be taking in-person public comment first and then moving to the online comments. And in general, we won't be going back and forth, so when it is time to comment and you're wanting to do that, please make sure that we're aware of that. So that leads us into our early oral communications. The city council values your comments, and this 15-minute time period allows people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. So again, if it's a specific agenda item that you're wanting to speak on, those will be coming later, so this is for things that are not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council actions will be set for future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers will be limited to two minutes. There will also be time for the public to comment specifically on each agenda item and again at the end of the meeting under item 12. So if you're here for in-person, the first four people can make their way over to the podium, and if you are on Zoom or on the phone, go ahead and raise your hand so we know that you're waiting. All right, we'll go ahead and take the first person.
I just would like to announce Councilmember Watson is on Zoom for the city clerk.
Last meeting, you made a big decision addressing the wastewater treatment plant, almost 55 million, and the issue there is you seem to be not very prepared by the fact that you didn't read the Coastal Commission ruling on that. So it's very disappointing to have such a big decision and not be prepared for such a big decision. The staff put a lot of time into this, and I'm talking about staff here and also the Coastal Commission staff. So it should have been read so you are aware of the history and what was going on as far as what the city was doing. And so this issue has sort of been brought up in the past too, from the 2019 in the past city council. They asked a lot of questions about this particular issue, and one of them was, you know, we want to get ahead of this sea level rise issue, and we need to purchase some property to build a plant. And it was also noted in this meeting that, you know, we sure don't want to make a mistake of putting six-story buildings on a location where wastewater treatment needs to go in the future. So that was three years ago, and we don't seem to be asking that question anymore. And I know it's just kind of seems like we're not giving very much attention to this, which is probably one of the most important issues that you're facing. I'll also note the grand jury report. I was here that night. It seemed like two hours was spent on, you know, how late should a concert go in the Creamery District, and only 10 minutes was spent on that response to the grand jury report. I was here, was expecting to have a public comment, it wasn't even any time. So I don't quite understand how such an important issue is not being addressed and I mean addressed by the council, not even spending very much time on these issues. So these are all particular laws. You swear allegiance to those laws. I think Bridget had you swear with your right hand when you first were, your first day at office here. So you need to start spending some time learning the laws and incorporating those into your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Gregory.
Good evening. My name is Sherri Potter, and I'm the general manager at the Hotel Arcata. I'm coming before the city council to express my frustration with the homeless on the plaza and the problems that they are causing for the businesses and in particular for the hotel. Last year alone, the hotel paid over $114,000 in TOT tax to the city. And having this massive problem with the unhoused right outside our door is having a negative effect on our bottom line. Almost every negative online review is about the homeless problem outside the hotel, with one guest describing it as hotel hell and another saying that it was worse than being in the Tenderloin in San Francisco. And they're not wrong, it is a nightmare. There are constant fights outside, people screaming and yelling at each other, coming in the lobby stealing from our breakfast bar, stealing from Humboldt Outfitters, sneaking into our bathrooms and trashing them, harassing our guests for money, leaving trash, food, feces, and yarn everywhere. People allowing their dogs to run loose with little or no oversight. Young women cannot walk around the plaza without constant cat calls and harassment. People in general feel profoundly unsafe. That's what's happening during the day. The real fun doesn't get started until after the sun has gone down. The fighting, the car break-ins, the drunk people, people setting off fireworks, people peeling out in their cars, drum circles going on all night. The other night, a fight started around midnight and ended up in the entryway of our hotel, and it literally went on for hours. The police were called, nothing happened until one of them broke a window out of Humboldt Outfitters. The broken window is only slightly unusual. We get broken windows out every few months, but the fights are happening almost nightly. We can't keep night staff. They say it's like working in a war zone. It's only a matter of time before somebody is seriously injured or killed. Just last night, there were multiple noise complaints made about the chaos outside. This morning, we noticed that during the night, people had smashed the marble wall in Parnash doorway and shoved lit pieces of paper inside of the wall. Thankfully, it's a brick building that did not catch fire, and no one was hurt, but a young woman at Humboldt Outfitters was assaulted today. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come and share that.
Hi, my name is Joanne McGary, and as I come here in the beginning of each meeting that I attend in person, I want to remind you that we are in a climate emergency. Our city declared it three years ago. I don't know what is happening as the previous speaker, the first speaker talked about our dealing with really important, life-changing, big, huge issues in our communities such as the sea level rise and the Coastal Commission and the climate reality. And the region has a draft climate action plan, and I never see it on the agenda. And I'm just really concerned that we will be knee-high, waist-high in water and overheated, you know, and no drinking water available before any action is really taken. And I'm just really perturbed that we deal with a lot of these other issues, and we get a lot of money for things like baseball stadiums and the like. And we have a serious global issue that's affecting us locally, and I really, really need to see some leadership, some brave and bold leadership on this council and in the city of what we are going to do, and particularly about fossil fuel emissions, greenhouse gas emissions. What are we going to do to plan for a city that doesn't make fossil-fueled vehicles so popular and numerous? And I am always inspired by the youth of the world, and Greta has said, "We are in a crisis, and we need to start acting like we are in a crisis." So please do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Good afternoon. My name is Emily Parsons. I am a store manager at Humboldt Outfitters. I am the person in question that was assaulted today by a homeless person that stole from our business. As Sherri stated previously, the manager of the Hotel Arcata, this is not something new for us, unfortunately. I've had two thefts in the last week, as well as a window broken. That's the second window that I've had broken this year. And we are noticing that there is not an appropriate response from the police. We'll make calls, and they either don't show up, or they don't pursue any action against the person that's committed the crime, and it's to the point where the people come in. I literally, the person that came in today said, "I'm sorry about last night," and then took everything again and pushed me out of the way. I don't think that this is something that is appropriate at all. I worry about my staff, and when they're there alone, most of my staff are young girls, some of them even in high school, and it's just a very scary, dangerous situation that I don't want them to be in, especially when they love the store that they work at, and it's just totally unacceptable for the situation going around to be that way. Customers are noticing, customers are uncomfortable. As Sherri said, it's affecting our bottom line as well. People don't want to be on the plaza. It's overran, and the police don't seem to have any control over it, and it's quite frightening as a young woman in Arcata. So thanks for taking the time to listen today.
Thank you, Emily, and I'm really sorry that that happened to you today.
Good evening. My name is Lori Waldorf. I'm a homeowner in the Sunset area, the neighborhood. I'm here tonight to speak about the Sunset Alliance Trail that is city-owned property. We would ask you, as a community, to postpone the November 1st planned work on the trail. This is just throwing good money after a bad idea. Public safety and liability issue is impacting all of the Sunset neighborhood and the affected Alliance neighborhoods. After dark, this dangerous trail becomes the criminal highway. There is a vast increase in neighborhood car and truck theft, tire slashing, trespassing into yards, smashed vehicle windows, graffiti. Plain and simple liability issues for our city. As more infill occurs, current and future, the flow of foot traffic and bikes on Alliance West and Western can go vastly onto the vastly improved walkway on Foster. This is for everybody's benefit. It's much safer down there. It might take five more minutes. As homeowners and citizens of Arcata, we expect our leaders to have strong vision that includes the safety to our renters, Cal Poly students, and homeowners. A compromise would be an unclimbable fence top and bottom of the trail with locked gates at sunset, like our nearby city skate park. A more lasting solution is to remove current unsafe infrastructure and place an unclimbable fence top and bottom. We believe the current situation would not be tolerated for a private homeowner. Much more glaring liability for our city of Arcata. What was maybe a decent idea 20 years ago does not warrant any merit today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so those were our first four in-person, correct?
We made it to five.
What was that?
Oh, okay. But we only have one with a hand up right now online, so.
Okay, so let's go ahead. We'll probably have time. We have 15 minutes for this right now. So let's go to the people online, and then we'll come back in person. All right, our one online will be James. Go ahead, James.
Hello to council and to staff. I'm speaking tonight again about the L Street Linear Path. We have an online petition and then also a written petition that's circulated, I think I told you about it at the last meeting. And just wanted to update that the October 18th Transportation Safety Committee meeting, they reaffirmed their recommendation to designate L Street Corridor as a linear park and to eliminate it as a L Street Cuplet from consideration of the complete streets. And at the October 12th Park and Recreation Committee, the chair did request to bring L Street Linear Park to their next agenda on November 9th meeting. And with that in mind, walking the path, you may have spotted signs crafted by Aaron's Kids, "Rails to Trails, Not Rails to Road." The adage speaks volumes to the L Street Corridor and fuels the fire to have it designated as a linear park. The L Street Pathway is presently classified as Rails with Trails as opposed to Rails to Trails. The former allows the rail line to exist next to a bike path. The corridor holds many titles beyond the L Street Rails with Trails Corridor. The L Street vision is Rails to Trails, Not Rails to Roads, and to be designated as a linear park. The L Street Cuplet relies on rail banking, the now-defunct North Coast Rail Authority easement that is now in the hands of the Great Redwood Trail. Normally, the outcome of rail banking is Rails to Trails in the form of non-motorized trail corridor. Instead, it is proposed that the easement would be consumed and paved over in addition to the open spaces. The corridor holds many titles, the L Street Rails to Trails, and is the primary segment of a statewide trail network. The L Street Rails to Trails is an inactive corridor line easement that is a segment of the Great Redwood Trails, a contiguous trail that will stretch north from San Francisco proceeding to Arcata and beyond. In conjunction with the Coastal Trail, the L Street Pathway is a major northern terminus of a north-south California non-motorized corridor, trans-California non-motorized corridor. And it's Arcata's contribution to the Humboldt Bay Trail. To Arcata, it represents a connector between CHB.
Jim, that's the end of your two minutes.
Hey, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no other online early oral communications, so you still have room for two more? So we'll take you guys, that'll be our eight. Go ahead.
Good evening, council members, city officials. Glenn Caldwell, here talking again about the Alliance Footpath nighttime crime and vandalism issue. We were before you two weeks ago, and on October 12th, we did have another meeting with Emily Sinkhorn and Sarah Schaefer. Twelve neighbors showed up at that meeting. At five, people took time out of their busy lives to do this because it's important to them and they have concerns. We discussed neighborhood issues about late-night foot traffic, vandalism, and crime related to the Alliance Footpath. Ms. Sinkhorn informed us that maintenance has been scheduled on the path for November. I would, until a policy is formulated to address criminal activity on this and similar paths in the city of Arcata to address law enforcement issues, please proceed cautiously with improvements and spending taxpayer dollars on this path. Until addressed, our neighborhood will continue to experience vandalism and theft perpetrated by late-night and early-morning criminals casing our neighborhood. Our neighborhood will continue to advocate for securing and gating this footpath and closing it sunset to sunrise. In the interim, I've received paperwork from Emily Sinkhorn to become a park steward, which may allow me to obtain graffiti abatement supplies from the city. I plan to follow up and use my personal time to address vandalism, graffiti, and dumping on the footpath in front of my house. Our next step will likely be a petition signed by our neighbors to advocate for getting the footpath and closing it sunrise to sunset. I hope you're open to those concerns. I hope you are hearing us. We're not going to go away. We're going to keep coming before you to try to figure out what the best solution here is. The best solution does seem to be non-climbable fence and closing that path from sunrise to sunset. Emily told us that the marsh currently is gated, I think 12:00 midnight to 4:00 a.m., and that that is going to be changed to reflect a more standardized schedule of sunset to sunrise. Really would like to see that happen in our neighborhood. The Westwood Garden Apartment Complex by Mr. Strombeck, proposed just down below at the base of this footpath, will put potentially a lot more people on that footpath. There are options. There are options to the north and options to the south. We were told that this footpath is a natural resource footpath, and therefore, the city's not concerned about liability, that it's kind of use at your own risk, although it doesn't say that. I hope that's true. I'd hate to see our taxpayer dollars go to defending injury lawsuits or that kind of thing on this footpath, which is steep and not really accessible to all of our community. Thank you.
Could I ask, I just want to see if I heard you correctly. You want the footpath to be worked on, or you don't?
I'm advising caution before the city puts more money into this footpath because there are no, I can't find any policies, city policies, addressing crime, vandalism, and that sort of thing on these type of footpaths. This isn't the only one, but this is the one I'm most concerned about because it's right in front of my house.
No, I just wanted to be, understand what you were saying.
I'm saying proceed with caution.
Thank you.
With spending taxpayer dollars on an improvement, and then maybe later, we're successful in having you gate it, or you decide to abandon it, be careful with spending money on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Good evening, Arcata city council members. My name is Gerardo Hernandez. I'm a college student at Cal Poly Humboldt and a community member in Arcata. There is an important thing that I want to talk about to the city council, which is about unity. I'm originally from Los Angeles, and just over a week ago, national headlines were made in Los Angeles of three city council members partaking in racist, anti-black, and hateful rhetoric to attack various more marginalized communities. To those who are aware of this event, I think we can all agree that language and behavior is inexcusable. I'm connecting this to this city council to continue in emphasizing the value of its own solidarity to our marginalized communities in Arcata. Recently, we've seen forms of hate speech that has attacked the Hispanic community in the city. Not only that, last year, there were anti-LGBT attacks in the city. These observations of attacks towards a variety of marginalized communities show that there is still a cultural and hateful divide within the city. We can overcome this, and whatever way possible, I think that the city through local government action can continue to bridge that gap to bring equality. Some examples can include having inclusive educational cultural workshops, having, passing a resolution or ordinance that protects people from discrimination based on gender identity and expression. If some of what I've stated is already happening, great, but if that's not the case, I greatly appreciate it if we can continue the progression of unity and equality. I bring awareness to the city council to recognize and down the line bring efforts of inclusivity that will continue to have a safe and warm environment for our marginalized communities. Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you, and yeah, absolutely to all of that. All right, thank you for everyone that came today.
I have a couple of comments in response, if I may. Just quickly, you know, I just want to acknowledge that we've heard some, you know, really serious concerns from our community, crime on the plaza, the Sunset Trail. And, you know, I feel like the appropriate thing to do, and what would typically be done in another city, would be to agendize these items for future public discussion and to make sure action's taken. You know, our community is basically begging us to help them with these issues. So, yeah, those are my comments. I'm sorry I'm not there in person tonight, I was feeling a little under the weather, and I didn't want to get anyone sick. Thanks.
All right, and yes, I turned my mic on to say thank you, and also that for the people that were here about the downtown area, I have been working extensively with merchants downtown and the police, and I will reach out to both of you guys to be included in that, and we're, we're trying, yeah, but we need to do better. I hear you.
Can I add, Stacy, I just know that upcoming on an agenda, we will have an update on the new community ambassador program, which I know is going to be a big part moving forward of trying to work on the safety on the plaza in a way that, you know, is keeping people present and keeping eyes on what's going on. So it has been agendized, and I hope we can, you know, continue this robust discussion.
Okay, so next we have the consent calendar, and all matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. We have A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of October 5th, 2022; B, bi-weekly report on disbursements; C, award a contract in the amount of $1,932,890 to Corallo Engineers Incorporated for the engineering services during construction for Phase 1 of the Arcata Wastewater Treatment Facilities Improvement Project, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents; D, reject all bids for the annual sidewalk improvement project 2022, and rebid the project. So I've asked for item D to be pulled, just to clarify, because the public might want, if I had the question, the public might also have that. Any of the others to be pulled?
A and C, please.
Sure. So C and D?
I'll make a motion to approve items A and B on the consent calendar.
A and C, A as in Alpha, C as in Cat, please.
Yeah, I think we're pulling A and C, A, C, and D, so just item B.
Didn't hear you say A. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve item B on the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this item? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Okay, let's just start with A. Councilmember Watson?
Yeah, so I was looking through the meeting minutes, and for the item on the wastewater treatment plant, it looked like pretty much everyone's comments for the meeting were included except for mine. I did not see a single accounting of anything I said during that item, including my reasoning for voting against it. And so I do believe my comments fit in the format of action minutes that we take. They were on topic, and it's pretty reasonable to have, you know, my reasons for being the only no vote on the project included. So maybe I'm missing it. Please tell me if I'm missing it in there and I doesn't see it. But yeah, if that's the case, then I request that we delay approving this item until we can get those minutes updated to be accurate to the record. Thank you.
Okay, so does that seem reasonable to everybody to set that aside and bring it back next week?
Yeah, that's not with me.
Okay, we'll bring that back next week, Councilmember Watson. I mean, next meeting, not next week.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Okay, item C.
Yeah, and I just, you know, kind of for what I just said, you know, I just feel like we should be taking a different direction on this item. We should be, you know, spending any money we're spending on it on relocating the facility. So I just wanted to pull it so I could vote separately.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve item C from the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, do we have public, if you have public comment on this, you can go ahead, and we'll take in-person first.
Hi, my name, my name's Joanne McGary, and I was at the meeting where this huge amount of money was being discussed and approved after a long, long time of development and getting bids, et cetera, for a Phase 1 aspect of the Arcata Marsh Sewage Treatment Plant. So when I saw this on the agenda, I'm trying to understand, again, it's a huge amount of money to consent calendar for some reason, and I would appreciate an explanation of why is this part of that $154 million that we approved last week, or is this something different? This is a huge issue. It's a huge project, and just going through it on a consent calendar really sort of bothers me. And as a citizen who is really concerned about the future of our infrastructure, including the sewage treatment plant, I would really like some better description and understanding of why this is on the agenda and what it means. So thank you.
I would also add to it that there's also a Phase 2 to this, so I don't know whether you're aware of that. That was in the report, so that's another $33 million plus 5.5%. That was in the report, so that's another 33 million plus 5.5 million for levy improvement. That's probably not even the total figure, it's probably going to be more than that. So this total project is, is, you know, getting close to 100 million when you look at it all. So what I would, my concern is that a number of years ago, I mean, this was brought up that why we didn't look at what the cost of a new plan is because that's the direction we're going to be forced to do in the future. There's, there's no other choice, we're going to have to do this at some point. So instead of spending a lot of money, we should have may possibly looked at what we have to do right now anyway, as far as the Coastal Commission demanding us to do a sea level rise and where that plant could potentially go. But we should have done it a while ago and seen what the costs were. It was a lot less even a few years ago what we've heard from last week. And the, the other issue is like these big decisions when it comes to like 55 million and other issues, it always seems like there's one bid or there's two bids or, you know, it doesn't really seem like there's very much competition as far as these prices and I don't even know how you have any input on whether what you're agreeing to is a fair price or whether you're being overcharged, but it just seems from the standpoint of, of the bidding process that, you know, we're getting ones and twos and even last week, most, most of the time was spent on the potential litigation because you had one particular bidder that was quite upset. So, you know, it sounded like it was pretty messy. I don't, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, but it was, it seemed like a pretty messy thing and that was one of the reasons why he probably should have delayed your vote because you had questions there and, and you didn't seem like you even really had enough time to, for the staff to address those. So you made the decision, but my overall view of this is, I don't know, maybe it's not very good planning for the city and it's a lot of money. We tend to look at the federal government as a pity, a piggy bank and I'm starting to understand why we're trillions of dollars in deficit because we, we act kind of like when we get it from the state or the federal government, it's like free money. But we're all citizens of the US and it's a lot of money and we should be paying more attention to it. Thanks.
Okay, do we have anyone online?
No online oral communications, public comment.
Okay, so, oh, and just item C, the, the bid amount, Joanne, I believe that is in, that's a separate, that's in addition to last week's. Last week was just the contract for that, so that is in addition to that. All right, we have a motion and a second.
But, but, city manager, do you, were you about to say something? Yeah, I was just, a few numbers have been thrown out, but the bid was 54 million, not 154 million just from last week. Still a lot of money, I just wanted to clarify that. And it was grant funded mostly? Yeah, there are a couple of items, specific items that the grant won't cover, but right now it looks like, you know, we're estimating 80% plus will be covered by state and federal Clean Water Act monies. Sure.
I think maybe the point the speaker was trying to get at is that.
I was about, I was speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear my.
Go ahead.
Well, it's just hard, it's hard because we, Councilmember Watson, we just can't see you, so it's hard, so let's.
Yeah, my screen was black when you were.
Yeah, I'm gonna let Meredith finish and then I'll come back to you, okay?
Sounds good.
Emily, just want to reiterate again that Phase 1 is just needed to keep the toilets flushing and for just, to bring us up to standard, is correct.
Great, so good evening, council members. Emily, St. Corrin Environmental Services Director. At your last meeting, we discussed the Phase 1 rehabilitation project and its immediate imperative need to replace aging critical infrastructure that is, you know, getting into the 40-year-old headworks and other key infrastructure, as well as really to meet key water quality standards and with upgrading the UV disinfection system. And so that is the real imperative need for this Phase 1 project. And the engineering services during construction are, with a project of this size, is really anticipated to be a lot of heavy lift that we don't have the internal capacity to do. The bid or proposal came in, we were anticipating costs up to 5% of construction costs. This is about 3.5% of construction costs, so that is within what we were planning for and is a eligible expense through that SRF grant or loan funding.
And all of this has been vetted by the Coastal Commission as well?
The Phase 1 project had received its coastal development permit at the September hearing that gave the permit to proceed with construction for the design life of the project through 2055.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Councilmember Watson, it's your turn.
Yeah, so I guess I, I kind of had a question for Emily about it being within, you know, estimated costs because, you know, like I stated at the last meeting, Phase 1 was initially described as being, you know, maybe $30 million and all of Phase 1 and 2 together were 55 million. And I didn't, I don't recall any discussion with the public, any discussion with the council since then about the cost basically doubling. We raised people's rates across the city based off of a $55 million price tag and that really impacts a lot of people in our community that are on, you know, fixed incomes and any increase to their living expenses really hits some hard. So, you know, I, it seems pretty reasonable to assume that now that the project has essentially doubled in cost, that we will have to raise rates again. So that's also another discussion we're not having. And, you know, I think to some extent, it's like we have to be able to look at the science ourselves and look at the experts ourselves and take in that information and make decisions for ourselves and not just say, you know, kind of pass the buck to other agencies and to other people. You know, I mean, it's our job to make these decisions in the end. And, you know, the California Coastal Commission, to some extent, you know, they, you know, they're under pressure to let us move this, this thing forward and, you know, they're hearing from us, well, we must do it, we have to do it, you know, we waited too long. So, I mean, they're kind of letting us dig our own grave because it's very unlikely they're not going to tell us to relocate the facility based off of their past decisions. And it's the same thing with the regional water to quality control. You know, they told us to study relocating the facility. And 2055 isn't that far away, you know, I mean, it's, it's really close. And, you know, my latest line about this is I feel like we voted to put $55 million under the Pacific Ocean and we're going to have to pay double for this all again in the end when we're forced to relocate the facility.
I'm going to, I would just say that, you know, Arcata is not unique. There are many other communities up and down the coast and they're all dealing with issues similar to what we have. And I'm sure the Coastal Commission is dealing with them too and talking to them about different avenues of how to maintain and keep our sewer treatment systems operating. But we have two plants down there, we have the sewer treatment plant and we have Public Works and I think there'll be a possibility eventually that we'll separate those. We'll have the sewer treatment and Public Works will be going somewhere else.
All right, do we have any other comments? Okay, we've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
All right. Did you get that, Bridgette? Okay, thank you. Okay, so item D. And I just had a little, I mean, I, I get it now, but there was a little bit of confusion just with the numbers and the way it was written, so if you could just explain real quick, that would be great.
Absolutely, yeah, I was reading through it later and recognized the same thing. So, yeah, hopefully I can clear this up a little bit. So we have our annual sidewalk, a little closer, okay. We have our annual sidewalk improvement project every year and we generally budget for around $100,000 and so it varies from year to year, but this year we had $100,000 set aside for this specific project. But we also had $50,000 set aside for some improvements on, just to the west side of the Plaza on G Street between 8th and 9th. And so it was similar type work where we have some sidewalk work and some tree removal and some tree planting. And so it made sense to join these two projects to a certain degree, kind of to save money on prices and essentially get economy of scale. And so we took approximately $35,000 of that $50,000 budget and combined it with our annual sidewalk improvement project as a single project. And so we essentially had about $135,000 budgeted for this project. And so when we bid it, then the low bid came in at, you know, round numbers about $185,000. So there's, that's that $50,000 over budget number that you see in the staff report. So, sorry.
I think my confusion just came in because it didn't say what the bud, what the budget was and so, and there was such a big gap between those two, I thought I was missing something, but it makes perfect sense now, so thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Yeah. Councilmember Watson, do you have any questions on this before we go for a motion?
No, thank you very much for asking.
All right, so I'll make a motion to reject all bids for the annual sidewalk improvements project 2022 and rebid the project.
I'll second. Okay, do we have any public comment on this?
Joanne McGary and when these kinds of sidewalk improvements and things are coming up, you know, it seems like it, people don't know about it. You know, I, I've come and reported some sidewalk issues a couple of times to the city and I, they had to look it up on a map and they said, well, thanks for coming in and letting us know. And then, of course, weeks go by, months go by and that same issue on the sidewalk is there. And it would just be sort of nice if the city, when I, a citizen comes up to ask about something, they say, well, we have this sidewalk improvement plan going and it's gonna, it's, we're setting it out to bid or whatever, to, you know, provide me with some information because I sometimes feel I go and I tell something to somebody in the city and it just doesn't go anywhere and nothing is done and there's safety and liability issues all involved and just a little bit improved communication about this whole process of how we're trying to keep our city functioning and safe and improved and, again, you know, we're spending a lot of money and the citizens need to know what we're doing and when we're doing it. So I just wanted to put that out there, better communication about what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Watson?
Sorry, aye.
Okay, great, thank you, it's unanimous. Okay, so that takes us to old business and this is to provide direction for amendments to the short-stay vacation rental program. So I'm sure that you all noticed their staff has a lot of questions for us regarding this. So as far as process goes, because I, I feel like there'll be a lot of discussion, which is good. So I thought we would do a staff report and then instead of just kind of going at it like a free-for-all and especially with having one council member on Zoom, which makes it harder to participate, I think we'll just go by question by question that's on there and we'll kind of do it in an orderly fashion and then that way we'll all get a voice and I think we'll just go through, see if we can get consensus on those items and see where it goes from there.
Great, thank you, Mayor David Loy, Director of Community Development. And I appreciate the approach that you outlined tonight and I would also offer that, you know, have a short staff report and then have very few comments on each section just to give you some input from, you know, what we've learned from the public. So the short-stay vacation rental program's about a year and a half, getting close to two years old now. Ordinance 1545 was adopted in 2021 and in June of 2022, the staff brought to the city council some recommendations for change and the city council did provide some feedback at that time, but we hadn't notified anybody of those potential changes. We hadn't done any kind of outreach or engagement, which is of course very important to the city. And so since that time, we've done a lot of stakeholder engagement, reaching out to individuals who'd reach out to us, notifying the individual permit holders of pending changes, worked with staff to get suggestions for, for changes now that we have some, some time under our belt operating the program. And what we have before you tonight is sort of final direction on how to modify the ordinance moving forward. The items that you discussed in your June 2022 meeting included, for instance, the cap on non-exempt permits and whether that should be amended, whether exemptions should be eliminated entirely and how that might affect the cap. There was some interest in having deeper detailed dive on the transient occupancy tax and how that's collected. Some folks wanted to have the platforms that they operate under, whether it's VRBO or Airbnb, collect the tax for them and remit that. And since that time, the input that we've received from operators included a stakeholder meeting in October. We've gotten a lot of input, there are some concerns about clustering of sites. The signs were universally, that's been an issue for, for operators, a lot of confusion and rejection of those ideas. And then also there was some pushback on eliminating the owner occupancy exemption from the folks that attended. And so with that, I'd just like to jump into the individual topics. I tried to organize them from sort of a priority strategy that would allow us to, you know, leverage earlier decisions here. And the first one is whether to address the exemptions. Should the long-term tenant exemption be eliminated? And then those who have long-term tenants, if they wish to operate short-stay vacation rentals, they would be subject to the cap. Should the exemption for owner occupancy be eliminated? Many people indicated in the outreach that they actually derive additional income. We had relatives provide input that, you know, some folks are having a hard time getting into their first home in Arcata and this provides them revenues to, to be able to get established in Arcata. And then if one or both of those exemptions are eliminated, do you want to fold those into the cap? Do you want to increase the cap or, you know, or how do you want to address the fact that currently we have about 100 and approximately 180-plus permits either in or being issued with approximately 90, 95 of those being subject to the cap and the balance being folks who have some sort of an exemption, whether it's an owner occupancy exemption or a long-term tenant exemption. So to get to the questions, be happy to answer any questions you may have about those, but the, the three on packet page 30, we're trying to address first.
Sure. Start, I guess. Thank you for that, I appreciate everybody that took the time to write in. Again, I'm sorry I read that, that meeting that you had was on Yom Kippur, so I'm kind of bummed about that. But I would like to add that, you know, in this time, we have turned three hotels into housing. So that really puts a lot of, there's a need, I guess, for people to stay in Arcata and I think that right now, you know, these short-term and long-term residency rentals are, you know, filling that gap right now and keeping people in Arcata, shopping at our stores, going to our restaurants and there's, that's how many rooms are in all those three hotels that we've just eliminated. So, I mean, my initial thoughts would to keep the exemptions for the long-term tendencies and for the occupied, owner occupied, I think that we shouldn't eliminate them.
Okay, great, so we have that, go ahead. Vice Mayor Schaefer, you want to go next?
Okay, we're just going to go question by question down line. Perfect, okay. I think that, that it is, it's a very different situation of having a long-term tenant and then also having an Airbnb on that property within that house than being somebody that lives in the house and is there and a nice, you know, face to greet a guest coming in who, you know, runs an Airbnb, I, I think of, I see Bob in the audience here, you know, who, who, it lives locally, knows a lot about what's going on and likes to welcome somebody into their home and kind of play host, but not necessarily, I think people that are long-term tenants like that. I'm, I know a couple of people that are renters that also have Airbnbs on their property and it's really frustrating actually for some of those long-term tenants. And so I think that's a very different situation. So I would be more inclined to say, yes, we should get rid of the exemption for the long-term tenancy but keep the exemption for owner occupied if that is possible and not too complicated. I don't know, David, if you think that would be too complicated, but I think that it is just a very different situation and, you know, thinking of the housing market and just, you know, what somebody would want to do with a property that they're already renting out and then also operate an Airbnb online, it just creates a bit, it's a different situation in my mind. So I don't know if that would create more of a clunky, difficult thing, but. So I don't know if that would create more of a clunky, difficult thing, but that would be the direction that I would want to go.
Yeah, that that would be um, easy enough to um, operate. In fact, it would simplify, any exemption that we eliminate simplifies our operation of it. There are a very few number of um, uh, permit holders that have multiple units on a site, you know, three, four, eleven units on a site and operate the majority of those as short-stay vacation rentals and have, you know, just like one uh, long-term tenant. So it was kind of an unexpected outcome from the original uh, intent of the legislation. Uh, so this would clean that up.
Yeah, I feel like what you just said too is something that people probably try to do to get the exemption as well. Like, I'll have one long-term tenant, but then I can rent out the the rest as Airbnb and operate it that way. So it is, you know, kind of, to me, an obvious loophole um, in the in the system. And kind of takes away that homey, nice Airbnb, you know, having a nice host that wants to welcome you to their community factor. So, yeah, that's the way I would go on that one.
Okay, okay. Sure, I'll go next. I'm gonna complicate it. I was, my initial um, my initial response for that is similar to Councilmember Matthews as a as a no. But um, I'm flexible on that one. Number two, I'm really, I'm a hard no on that one. So if it's if we're negotiating, I will be happy to um, give you your, I I can go, yes. I'll go either way on that one, um, if that, you know, makes it easier. Councilmember Stillman.
Well, when I had um, long-term or short-stay rentals, they weren't on my, they were on my property, but they weren't on my, where I lived. And so um, and then I had other tenants there. So, you know, I, talking to people about this, I just, so that's how I ran it. But I know other people run it where there's actually, I don't run any of them anymore, I have nothing. But I think um, if you're, it's sort of like, almost like a bed and breakfast. If you're going to have, uh, you're going to be living on your property and you also have an Airbnb or short-stay rental, then it's more inclusive. Right now, I I received a complaint recently for a property that is um, no one's live, no one lives there with the property. So it's probably one of the numerous people that have bought buildings or houses here and they use them part of the year and the rest of the year they make them into um, short-stay rentals. And they come for six months and rent them out for six months and that way they can pay for it. And so then you don't really have much, well, this person is really frustrated because he called and he never got any help. It's no smoking, right next door to him, they're all smoking, supposedly no partying, they're all partying. And he got no help from the uh, people that were managing it. So if this happens, I mean, I'm sure I had lots of problems with mine, but mine were in the two thousand and six, two thousand and ten, a long, long time ago before. We had more than three in two thousand and six, so things have really changed. But um, my comments are much further along.
Okay, so, so.
I have other items further along that I want to address.
So for number one, do you have a opinion on that? Yes or no, I think?
Long-term tendency be eliminated? If you're there for a long term, over thirty days, you don't pay tax?
That that one's um, specific to having multiple units on a property. And then if one of the units is rented to a long-term tenant, then the other unit can be a short-stay rental and it's exempt from the cap.
I see what you're saying. I huh, but it could go back.
Yeah, I mean, all we're talking about is whether or not they should be exempt from the cap or included in the cap, which would reduce the overall numbers in the city.
I would say included, because it'll go back and forth.
Okay, so I think Alex, I mean, Councilmember Stillman is on the same page as Vice Mayor Schaefer. Correct, okay, which I'm jumping on their page and Councilmember Matthews is okay with that. Um, Councilmember Watson, would you like to weigh in?
I agree with Councilmember Schaefer and Councilmember Stillman.
Okay, so we have consensus on item one, so that's a yes. Okay, and we'll go in different orders. Um, we are, we'll go in different orders too. So um, should the exemption for owner occupancy be eliminated? Well, we just, hold on.
Bring it back as it finished and then we do it, I don't know.
Sure, we can take public comment on each item, that would make sense. For. Yep, let's do, um, let's talk about item number two and then we'll do public comment.
But, okay, so the, if we are eliminating the exemption for a long-term, then do we need to decide now on number three what the cap should be? Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, you can ex- um, address number two and then depending on whether you keep that exemption or or eliminate it, you may have a different response on um, what the cap should be.
Yeah, I think um, if we, if we want to, if we're, my goal is to try to work our way through this and come up with something that we can all vote on. And so then if we're doing it that way, that's, we'll go for that, it might not work. If we're doing it that way, then we'll just take public comment after we've talked about all this and then we can revisit things. Does that seem okay? All right. I know it seems complicated, but actually, thank you Director Loyah for breaking it down like this because he foresaw what a nightmare it would have been if there had not been individual questions. So um, it looks like uh, we are all in agreement on number one for now. Okay, so number two, should the exemption for owner occupancy be eliminated? I already gave my opinion on that. I said, for me, that's a no. Let's go ahead and go to Councilmember Stillman.
I think it should be included. I mean, it should not, you should not be eliminated just because you live in your house and you've converted a portion of your house or your garage or built an ADU and I don't think it should be eliminated.
Okay, so you want, you think people should still have that exemption? Okay, um, let's go to Councilmember Watson.
They should still be included.
In the cap, you mean?
So you do want them in the cap?
Yes, they're part of the cap.
Okay, so you're a yes on that?
Um, yeah, I'm just, just to, just to clarify it a little bit. So to include them, then we eliminate the exemption, right?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, and Councilmember Watson, just to be, the the reason that I'm saying no is I just feel like that, you know, like a a homeowner should be able to do that to supplement their their income. So that's why, that's why I've got a no on it.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, you know, when we originally came up with this, um, I, my memory is, um, you know, anybody, correct me if I'm wrong, it's kind of the intent was um, you know, or the target were properties that were entirely getting converted into Airbnbs. And complaints we were getting from neighborhoods, they, you know, felt like, I mean, you know, I think even Mike Wilson had, you know, brought it up to me and and promoted doing this. He wanted the cap as low as possible. He felt like that his neighborhood was getting taken over with these um, operations and um, but you know, if you have a homeowner on site, uh, or if you have a long-term tenant, you know, in some instances, just, those are just examples of how it can kind of change that vibe from just a straight, you know, mini hotel into being part of the neighborhood. So um, I'm okay with um, leaving the exemption on that one. And uh, yeah, those are my thoughts on that, thanks.
Okay, Councilmember, oh, well, go ahead. You're messing up my order.
I don't know what the order is. I was just going back down this way.
Just go, just go.
Well, I was just gonna say, I kind of already gave my my piece before, just that idea, similar to what um, Councilmember Watson just said, that, yeah, if it's part of the neighborhood and if it's, you know, this idea of having a host kind of who who takes care of the place and welcomes the person in, I think that's the original, like, intent of what an Airbnb kind of is. And so I think that, no, we should not eliminate the exemption. I'm gonna use the language that you used in here, so it can be as clear as possible, yeah.
And I agree with that. Okay, well, and just to be clear, Councilmember Stillman just said that's what she means as well, right?
Yes. But you know, it it's really difficult for some people um, that have an attachment, a unit attached to their house to get insurance. I I had a friend that went through that and she was not able to really find insurance if it's attached to your house. And um, so it's always made me think about the fact that I have two apartments on my property. The one behind me would not ever be able to be one because I wouldn't be able to get insurance for it. But the one above the garage, I could because it's not attached to my house. So there are difficulties with insurance. That's something we didn't discuss about insurance when we met with everybody. And I'm wondering how they're doing that.
Okay, so we have for number two, we said that that is a no. Okay, so now do you need direction as far as if the, I guess, before you get direction, if you could give your opinion on whether the cap should be adjusted or not?
Yeah, we have um, we have several properties that are currently um, fall under that exemption for long-term tenancy. And so if that's eliminated, I guess the two things that I would point out with any of these changes, if it affects the uh, individuals who currently have a permit, you know, have a license under that, you know, I I would recommend that you allow those folks to go ahead and continue to operate. And then, you know, just as we did the first time, even though we were over the cap, you know, as those uh, permits closed, then we would approach the cap over time and not necessarily take that uh, away from anybody. So regardless of what you do with uh, changing the cap on this, I guess I would point that out first, that you try and introduce this slowly for folks. In terms of uh, raising or lowering the cap, I mean, I think to uh, Councilmember Matthews' point, uh, we did have a hundred and forty units of hotel rooms taken offline with the the Home Key projects. Um, we did see an uptick. Historically, we had, you know, a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five as sort of the the natural limit that we, you know, were aware of anyway. Um, and we've seen a a, an uptick in the number of short-stay vacation rentals since those hotel closures. And so I think there is a little bit of a relationship there. Some of the public also brought this forward um, in our stakeholder engagement. And so um, you know, I I do think that the the specific number is really, I'm, I don't have a a recommendation per se. It really is a policy decision about how many of, what proportion of the city's housing stock, you know, do you want to see, um, you know, converted to these uses? When you have an exemption, that means that there's always going to be an unknown. You know, anyone who has um, you know, home, all of the, you know, theoretically, the the maximum is any owner could then have one. Um, and that's a pretty significant chunk of the uh, the the housing stock, but we haven't really seen that. So I think, you know, anything in the range of, you know, a hundred to a hundred and fifty, which I think is what you were contemplating before as a cap is is appropriate.
Right, ask a question, um, because you you said about a hundred and forty units for the Home Key. And and then also, I mean, how many units um, of the Comfort Inn is Cal Poly taking up as well? I mean, that takes that off of our plates as well, so that's an additional chunk of hotel rooms.
I think they're just right around fifty rooms.
And also, that'll be available again for um, occupants, travelers in the summer. So they'll, they'll put it back the way it was in the some, for regular, you know, transit people. And then they'll turn it back into student housing in the fall.
Um, my suggestion would just, I think that we keep the cap at the one hundred, that it is, until we see an issue.
Yeah, I'm happy with that.
Yeah. Councilmember Watson, how do you feel about the cap be remaining at one hundred?
I a hundred percent agree, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Stillman, are you fine? Okay, so, look at that, unanimous all the way through those, all right. Okay, so um, we're gonna go to proximity. I think that kind of speaks for itself, unless you want to add something?
The only thing I would add is um, that this would, uh, you know, make the program a little bit more complicated to operate. We've tried to simplify it as as much as possible. And depending on what metric the council decided to use for uh, for a proximity limit, um, it could make it more or less complicated. I've got some graphics if you want to explore those options. I think you probably get them intuitively, so I won't show them unless you're really interested. Um, but this was something that, you know, in particular, uh, one public member who has seen a number of units in their neighborhood convert over to um, uh, short-stay rentals, um, you know, is experiencing the, you know, the loss of the, the, you know, fabric of of the neighborhood, you know, the the neighbors that you know and, you know, talk to and that sort of thing, uh, feels particularly impacted. I don't know how pervasive this is. I know that there are, uh, from the the graphics that we showed in June, I believe that the the distribution is pretty, you know, it's pretty spread out. We're not seeing a, like a, one part of town where there's a significant clustering. But I think on the neighborhood level, when you have three, four, or five units, you know, on your block, um, you know, convert over, it starts to feel pretty significant at that neighborhood scale.
Okay, we'll go ahead and start with you, Councilmember Stillman.
I was going to say, when the Fair Winds becomes supposedly short-stay, if they're gonna be operating that way, that's what I heard at one time. I don't know what's happened with, um, what kind of permitting they've done in the city of Arcata. But then they they have, I don't know how many rooms or how they're gonna combine them or what they're going to do there. Then we have another one over here that's been turned that way. We have one down on South G Street, which almost operate like motels or hotels when you have that many conglomerated or put together in one area. So that's how I would somewhat think about, like the Fair Winds. So the one down on South G Street, probably the one over here too, with so many units, they're acting as a motel.
Right, so, but what's, what is your opinion on should the, should we?
Oh, I think it's very difficult to do.
Okay, got it. Um, Councilmember Watson?
Could we please restate the question, I'm sorry?
Sure, we're just, um, we're just trying to decide whether or not the ordinance should include a proximity limitation. So, you know, just, it would be complicated, but to look at it, you know, neighborhood by neighborhood when people are applying.
And Director Loyah said that right now he feels like that it's not, it hasn't been a concern, we're not seeing clustering, is that right?
There, I mean, there's a little bit, but it's not all over. I mean, there's a cluster in my neighborhood, but it's not all over town.
Okay.
And that's downtown too, which like, you know, that makes sense, people want to be there, it makes a little bit more sense, but, yeah.
Um, yeah, I mean, I feel like um, uh, you know, I guess it's a, yeah, it's a hard balance. I mean, if it's excessively complex for the staff, um, then to me that discour-, you know, I don't know if discourage is the right word, but you know, makes me less interested in doing it. It does seem like, you know, on the face of it, that that is, you know, the best way to go, to make sure not one neighborhood's getting significantly impacted. But um, yeah, I guess I'd, you know, would need to get a a better understanding of how um, staff intensive it would be.
So I think some of the neighbors that you referred to are thinking of Trinidad, where they don't have very many people living there because so many of them are vacation rentals. And that is a fear that we would eventually lose whole neighborhoods. And I think that's something we'd have to look at and keep track of and see how that's going. And we'd have an idea when they come in with their permits and they're paying, we'll know where they are and we could start to see how that compounds. And it has to be something would be revisited, would have to be revisited.
Yeah, I think that from what I'm hearing, that it's not hugely a problem now, but should it become a problem in the future, it can be revisited and I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a no on that one.
Okay, so.
For now, but I remember looking at the map that that David showed at our meeting before and, you know, there was a couple little clustering kind of in the downtown area. And like, one street in Sunnybury that looked kind of clustery, but besides that, the rest looked pretty spread out. And I think that is something, though, you know, to to bring this back before council every, you know, it's been about a year since we did it before and and to have that check in and just to kind of see, you know, how it's progressing and and what the the lay of the land looks like.
That's a great suggestion.
But also, I think um, the ones that are in the downtown, clustering in the downtown, it's beneficial because they're replacing, well, you know, we have the hotel and they're replacing other visitor opportunities. And then it, anyway, opens up more opportunities for the downtown and for the restaurants, et cetera, et cetera. Because people come and they, when you go somewhere, you wander all around, you check everything out and it's a lot of fun. And I think that's the same thing, that's how people look when I see them on the streets that I've never seen before. I know they have to be visitors and they seem to be enjoying themselves.
Okay, so it seems like. Okay, so it seems like we are all on the same page. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems as though we think, yes, it's not ideal when they cluster, but it's not a problem yet, and it will be staff-intensive, which we know we have limitations with our staff time, so I think for now, it seems like we're all wanting to keep this as a no.
I agree.
Okay, so, all right. Operator?
Should we maybe take comment on things if it is specific to the thing?
No. No, I think, because that's what I was going to do, but then you all said no.
That sounded scary.
So what I, what we're going to do is we're giving you all of our thoughts, and then when we get to the end, before we vote, we'll have public comment, and you can comment on any of these things, and then I'll open it back up to council. Did we want to change our mind based on any of our public comments? We'll rediscover it, and then we'll take a vote. So everybody will be heard. All right, awesome. Okay. Operator, limitation.
So this is, this was brought up again as a means of, if not, you know, if there weren't proximity limitations, are there, you know, owners out there who are, you know, taking a significant proportion of these opportunities that are non-exempt? So, you know, operators who own multiple sites within the city of Arcata, again, I think, you know, this would be something that, you know, none of these changes are impossible for staff to implement. I want to be clear that if there's a strong policy direction from the council, you know, policy feeling about, you know, how to, how to change this ordinance, we can pivot and make that part of the program. I don't have a strong recommendation on this one. We could, you know, easily implement it. It was something that came up as a recommendation from a public member, so we put it forward. And the question is, should the ordinance include a limitation on the number of permits any one owner can possess?
Okay, we'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Watson. You can go first this time.
Um, yeah, I feel, I feel it should. You know, I mean, it can, I don't, I don't know. I mean, that's a really tricky one. My knee-jerk reaction is yes, to, you know, make it more equitable, to give more people opportunities to participate in the program. You know, I think it's a, you know, realistically imaginable scenario that a few people could end up with the majority of the permits. And, you know, I, I think in general, you know, in our society and in our economy, that usually doesn't produce the best outcome for the consumers in the community.
Okay, great. And we'll go, we'll go down the line, and then if we come to a consensus that we are limiting it, then we will need to discuss what the, what the limit is. All right, Councilmember Matthews?
All right. So I guess how are there, how many operators are there that have multiple permits, and out of those, like, what is the number of the permits they hold?
Yeah, we just have a very few number of operators who have multiple properties. The majority of them, you know, I want to say a handful, like, fewer than six have multiple properties. The majority of them have two properties, and there's one operator who has, you know, maybe four or five properties. And then there's one operator who I think has three properties, but one of those properties is like a, you know, 12-unit apartment building, and of those 12 units, the majority of them are short-stay vacation rentals. So this isn't a, this isn't pervasive at this point. You know, and I, I think because of the existing distribution of permits, you know, the way that they're held currently, it would, it's unlikely that you would see, you know, consolidation where one, one large property owner had a majority of these, these permits.
Sure, so with that being said, I think that this may be another situation where you kind of let the status quo be and kind of revisit it, again, if it becomes a bigger problem.
Well, I do know some people make their living that way, by having numerous vacation rentals, and they manage them all, and that's how they support themselves. And probably the one that has so many units that you mentioned, that's one way she supports herself, is by renting out, renting houses and then using them as short-stay.
So I'm, so you're, you're a no on that as well as Meredith, like, not to limit them?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
But it could become a major business for someone, you know, that they rented up most of Arcata, made all of them short-stay. Who knows?
Well, we have a cap, so they're not going to buy up all of Arcata. We have a cap, a 100, just to be really clear, Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Uh, yeah, no, I'm a no on that one, and just, yeah, I think if that's somebody's business and they, they want to operate it, there's people that enjoy doing that and like it, and that's their hustle, and other people that have no interest in it. So I don't think, you know, we're necessarily pushing people out that would, I'm trying to get in that short-stay rental market, I don't think that's, that's happening. And if, you know, somebody is good at it and likes operating a place, then let's, let them continue to do that and add more to it. So I'm, I'm, I'm a no on that one.
Okay, so.
Is the next one the phone number?
No, not yet.
Just really quickly, right now, we exceeded the cap, right?
If, by eliminating the exemptions for long-term tenancy, I'm going to estimate that you're about 30, at least 30 over the cap. Probably right about that. You're at about 130 of existing permits.
Yeah. No, and I get the argument, like, you know, free market and let people make it a big business, but, you know, there are, there were a lot of people originally that were opposed to the cap because, you know, they wanted, you know, more people wanted to be able to participate in it. So I don't think there's a shortage of, you know, people that want to participate in it. I think it's more about, you know, what's best for the consumers and what's best for the community. And, you know, usually it's, you know, it's not usually seen as a positive when, you know, any one person or business or entity, you know, gets majority control over, over a resource. So I feel like we should have a cap, but if you guys don't want to do it, then that's okay. I'll, you know, I'll still go along with you guys.
Okay, so that brought up a clarifying question for me. So going back to eliminating the cap for the long-term, so that means now we'll be at 130, so that means there would be no more new ones unless you're an exempt. So to be clear, a homeowner who would be exempt could do it, long-term, you could do that, but anybody else that's not, doesn't occupy that space could not right now.
Correct. And we would then, as those short-stay rentals came off, as those permits were not renewed, we would continue to not issue a new one until we were below the 100 cap again, which would likely be several years. Or longer.
Okay, so I think that when, when we're all done with this, I'm just going to go back, and we'll revisit the cap overall to make sure that we're comfortable with, with the cap, with the 100, and now that we're over it on all of that. Okay, so it seems, Councilmember Watson?
Can I, so if we're already over it, then we're technically raising it to the amount that it's going to be at, is that?
No, we're not raising it, we're just, I mean, it's over the cap, and we're saying that we can't add any new until those fall off, which would be several years.
But then are we going to, and then we're going to, once they fall off, we're still keeping it?
It's 100. Yeah, so that's why I kind of want to revisit the overall cap, since we're already over it now, and we can kind of look at that at the end. All right, so Councilmember Watson, did I hear you right when you said that it's not going to, even though you're the one dissenter on this, it won't necessarily change your overall vote?
You got it.
Okay, so so far, we're, that's a no on that one.
Phone number.
Okay, so it takes us to the phone number, I think, so let's go ahead. Who hasn't gone first yet?
You.
Okay, I, I think that this is an easy one. I think that it, I think that it can be eliminated. My vote is yes. Councilmember Stillman?
So I, I feel, I noticed the other day when I was in, over in Sunset area, that somebody had a piece of paper this size with their phone number on it in their window, and so it's, obviously, it's a vacation rental because that's a requirement. But I'm thinking, is it possible that the police department would have a list of the vacation rentals, and so if someone said, we have this, whatever is happening at such-and-such address, they would be able to see that? Or is that just another layer?
I like that idea though, because that would make it private, at least. It's not publicly posted, but still the owner could be contacted in the event of an emergency or a issue that is taking place, without having to publicly post your phone number to the entire town.
Yeah, I agree with that. It's a good, is that feasible?
I'd have to check in with the chief to see how they would, you know, maintain that information. It's certainly something that we can, you know, figure out and come back and let you know about. What we've found is that we're just, you know, the rationale behind this, as you're all aware, was to make it so that the homeowner was taking those calls first instead of the APD. And what we've found is that the APD just aren't getting the calls. This has been one of the most challenging, for some reason, the most challenging element to try and implement, and I haven't heard a single operator say that they would like to retain this.
Okay, so, let's, will you turn your mic off?
Well, I would remove it.
Okay, so Councilmember Stillman says yes to that one as well. Councilmember Watson?
I mean, yeah, my only concern is, you know, we, you know, we talk about how, you know, we want to make sure APD have the resources they need, and, you know, sometimes we only have three officers on duty of time, and shifting that burden to the police department when people can, you know, contact the actual person responsible directly. But if, as David says, so far there isn't any evidence that it's a concern, then for now, it does, it seems okay if we remove it, and, you know, yeah, just down the road, if it becomes an issue, then we can always revisit it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Matthews?
Yeah. I'm a yes on this. Eliminate.
Okay. Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yeah, I would say yes, eliminate, but it seems too, around town, I guess, a lot of operators have already gotten their nice fancy signs made, so I guess some of them will definitely keep those in place, but maybe the paper signs in the windows will go away. But it's nice to know too, I don't know, maybe people walking around can recognize a spot, at least if it's labeled as one, and say, oh, I'd like to stay there next time I'm in town. But making it a requirement, I think is, yeah, definitely. I know people aren't happy with that, so I'm happy to eliminate that.
So when Rose Court Cottage first started, you know, years ago, in the early 2000s, she had a sign on the side of her building, say, Rose Court Cottage, so, and she would, people would see that, and they would call to see if it was available. So from that point of view, it has an advantage, and it also has a disadvantage.
Yeah, and that's a great advantage, if people want to post that, but that's, you know, for business, not, yeah.
Okay, well, that was our, that was our easy unanimous one, so let's not belabor it.
Just, I just want to throw the idea really quick, that I still agree, I'm not dissenting, just that, you know, just food for thought. I mean, just something that crossed my mind. You know, obviously, some people do already, you know, like Sarah said, some people already have it up, like Alex pointed out, it's going to be a benefit. And, you know, acknowledging that when people do call APD, it is an actual cost to the city, in a sense. And, you know, it would be neat if we, I mean, this is probably too much, but I just wanted to mention it, if we did something like, if you do list your phone number, you get 10 bucks off your permit fee or something, because they're actually saving us money in the end when people don't have to call APD. But I just wanted to get that out. Anyways, thanks.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, when if we start having problems, then we might need to revisit these creative ideas. But, all right, so we're next, should hotel rooms be regulated by the short-stay ordinance?
No.
So we're going to go in an orderly fashion? So I'd like to start with Director Loyah, please. Did you have?
Yeah, because I wanted a little clarification on this one too.
Yes, thank you.
So I get a vote on this one?
Why not?
You know, the research we've done, I think that, you know, I would recommend that you do not include hotel rooms in this ordinance or in the cap. You know, they, hotels are specifically designed in our land use code. If you're operating as a hotel, you may advertise on, you know, these platforms, but it's a different use type. And so, you know, there are some, some examples, Councilmember Stillman pointed out earlier, that, you know, are a little gray. We've had hotels convert to, you know, residential units, and then convert back to hotels. But, yeah, I would say that it's a different use type, and it shouldn't be regulated under the cap.
Okay, so back to our original order. Councilmember Matthews, I believe you said it's a no for you?
It's a no for me.
Like Randy Jackson says, it's a no for me, dog.
It's a no for me? Councilmember Stillman? She said no. Councilmember Watson?
No.
All right, that was easy. It seems like number two is very similar. Would you say so, Director Loyah, or what would be your recommendation on that one?
Yeah, and I may have gotten myself confused in the double negatives, I'm not reading this over again, but you don't need to answer number two. Since it's not going to be regulated, we don't need to address number two. Yeah, so the transient occupancy tax was brought up when we first adopted the ordinance. It was also brought up during our stakeholder engagement. And what this focuses around is that some, some folks would like the ability to have their platform that they use collect the transient occupancy tax and then remit that to the city on their behalf. The, the operators would benefit from not having to track, maintain, and remit those taxes to us. And for those operators who use only one platform, it would be, you know, fairly streamlined and simple for them. And then their full price would be listed, you know, for people who are, you know, coming to stay in our community, they would know they're paying, you know, whatever the total is, the platform collects it and then sends it to us. On the city's side, the challenge that we have is that we would then have to get into contracts with each of the different platforms separately, and we would have other situations as well for folks who aren't necessarily using those platforms. And so it creates a, a lot of different points of entry on the city's side, receiving those taxes. In addition, when we last looked at it, the, the platforms were not willing to provide us a breakdown on, you know, how those taxes were collected, we would just receive a lump sum quarterly. And so it provides, produces significant challenges in the finance department, trying to audit these, and in the, you know, the permit issuance side as well, if you're, you know, asking folks to demonstrate that they're, they're actually operating, you know, on a regular basis. So staff would recommend that you do not, you know, create the ability or start allowing for this, just because it would be, you know, create an administrative burden that, you know, I'm not sure we'd be able to rise to that challenge. One alternative would be that, you know, we just concede that we don't know when or how or why we're collecting the taxes, we just are receiving these, these monies. It's probably not the most effective way of running a regulatory program, but I think we would have to concede to that if we did accept that the platforms were going to collect taxes for the, the operators.
Yeah, I don't like that. City Attorney Diamond, is there anything that, that you need to clarify?
Not really. This is, this is an issue that has been vexing since Airbnb first, you know, started. They were one of the first ones, you know, VRBO as well. And they have offered their, you know, their blanket agreements to municipalities, saying, we will collect the tax for you, but we're not going to tell you who are, where our properties are or who owns them, because they want to maintain confidentiality, but we, you know, trust us. And those, you know, those who have rented on those sites do see those taxes get added. So, you know, those agreements are, are probably honored by the larger entities. And I, I think, you know, the, the sort of trust, but there's no ability to verify, arises with the smaller, you know, sort of businesses or persons that are doing it. And that's, that's the issue, and there's, you know, there's, certainly it would be a violation, and if, if the city became, it'd be a violation of the, of the city codes for, you know, not paying. If the city became aware of it, then it could initiate some investigation and enforcement, but that would be the only basis for doing it.
So what's the, what's the process now? That, I mean, how complicated is it now for a certain vacation rental to, you know, pay us?
Well, and you might hear from some of them tonight.
Well, and you might hear from some of them tonight, but there is a form that the city has that they fill out quarterly and they remit that, you know, typically with a check or come in and pay with credit card. At the time that we last looked at this, and this has maybe changed, and perhaps we will speak to this tonight, and if it's of real interest to the council, we can revisit it. Airbnb was the only one with the blanket agreement. Vacasa wasn't really active in this area, but VRBO or Verbo was not, had not developed an agreement that they were going to be entering into with municipalities. The county, at one point, tried to create an agreement that would cover all the county and the cities, and then pulled back. And they did enter into one with Airbnb. So if people are just on one platform, if they were just on Airbnb, then it was going to be an easy collection. But if they were on multiple platforms, then we would maybe get it automatically through Airbnb, but then they would still be remitting through the others or if they did it direct. So, but we certainly could revisit and see if that's, and it's probably evolved. It's been several years.
I don't know, it sounds like it's a pretty simple streamlined process now and that's just going to add, like, several layers of complication, so I'm good without it.
So an example is when we had Arcata stays, we had four platforms that we were working with. Well, you know, that's Arcata stays we were working on, four different platforms. So money would have been coming in, you know, and they collected it. Arcata stay, Chrissy Laird collected it all herself and sent it in, according to the different units. And I think it's part of doing business and that individuals that are running this, they're running it like a business, they're running it to help them have a more financially better life, and it's part of doing business, just like anything else you have to do. And so I think they should be collecting it and sending it in, keeping track of their records. Plus, it gives them an idea of what their turns are and how often they have people there and what it's like for them each quarter. And is it a good, is it a good business or not? Because you have to assess all of that when you're collecting your taxes.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here's a thought. Do you think that, or do you know if there are? I mean, Airbnb's operating that are not permitted by us? And that perhaps by partnering with these agencies or partnering, you know, with Airbnb to collect the taxes, that actually we would probably get more tax revenue because they are operating under Airbnb, but might not be registered with us? So we don't know if they're paying their taxes or have awareness? I mean, is that a thing that might be happening?
I'm certain that it's happening in at least one or more units in Arcata. We do, I would say that our finance staff has been diligent over the years of going on and kind of self auditing. We're a pretty small town. So even from pretty simple pictures with our water meter reader out there, walking street block by block. You know, we have brought a lot of people into the system. We did a lot of outreach and education when you put this cap and permitting in. And I think it did spur people that had gone under the radar to say, "Now, if I get caught, I'm going to be over the cap and I'm not going to be able to continue." They came in through that. And then the city has hired two firms over the last 10 years to come in and do full audits. And so they have access, you know, to certain areas of data and then they go through all of the platforms and they go through all of our records. And they look at sort of historical use from that property. They look at where there's significant changes. And we have collected, you know, fairly significant TOT revenue during each of those audit periods. So those are sort of the strategies we've used in the past. But to say there isn't one out there operating right now, I'm certain there probably still is.
Okay, yeah, this one is hard for me. I wrote yes, question mark. So my first knee-jerk reaction was, yeah, I think that it would streamline the process if, you know, we worked with these websites to be able to collect the tax that way and streamline it for also, you know, we're putting all these regulations on operators, so it would make their lives easier as well. However, that's easy if there's only one platform. But now that we're seeing more and more, I mean, just deciding, you know, which ones do we go with? I mean, I know, for me, if I'm going to look up a place to stay, it's either Airbnb or VRBO. I think those are the ones people mostly use. But I've seen, you know, signs posting locally for Vacasa and even other ones I haven't heard of. So it just seems a little, I don't know, intangible. But I guess, you know, if we wanted to pilot it, just by saying, okay, we'll go with partnering with Airbnb and trying that, but then, I mean, I guess that leaves then operators that list on VRBO to continue the normal process that they're in, yeah. So I'm kind of sitting on yes on this one. But, you know, it wouldn't be my end-all, be-all, but I'd like to hear from you and from Councilmember Watson, I guess, as well, before I maybe formally make up my mind, but... I could really go either way, but I think that this is something that we should look into. And I just hope that these platforms, too, want to, you know, streamline their processes and work with cities. And I know as somebody that has stayed at a lot of Airbnbs, it's really nice to just see that breakdown, too, and see, you know, what's the taxes, what's the cleaning, what's the actual cost of the place as somebody staying there, because it answers a lot of the questions of what, you know, the cost is in that cost. So I would tend towards saying, yeah, I think we should at least partner with, like, the two big ones, Airbnb and VRBO, to kind of do that.
But you know, I have to say Vasca, or however you actually pronounce it, was Redwood Vacation Rentals. And he was a gentleman that was on our planning commission. And he had them in all these different communities here, and he sold them to this company. And he moved to Hawaii, and now he is doing the same thing in Hawaii that he did here, managing vacation rentals. So, and so I'm sure, because they had them in Trinidad and McKinleyville, Arcata, Eureka, and I'm not too sure for how far south, they had a storage unit in every community where they kept all the goods, you know, your cleaning supplies and so forth, your whatever. And they would pick up what they needed to go to, you know, it's all very organized. You know, you do this and you do that. Housekeeping picks up, they have this many. So, and I'm sure that's still happening, because that's the company he sold. He had so many units for that company.
Okay, so Councilmember Watson, we'll hear you next, but I think I'm going to ask a question, because it might direct the conversation. There are, as we've decided, multiple platforms. Would the city be able to say, you know, to actually say that they are only going to accept the automated payments from a couple, or do we have to be open to all of them? Well, I think we would actually want to be open to as many that would enter them. I think the concern initially was that only Airbnb would enter into those agreements. And I'm not saying that still. I mean, if this is of strong interest to the council, we would need to do that research now. And so we just figured that we were already going to be receiving payments then from multiple places, that we're not going to be automatic, and to try to have any kind of sense of auditing in that system was hard at the time. I think it's certainly easier for the renter, I think it's easier for the operator, and really, it would be easier for the city if they all came in that way. But at the time, that wasn't the option for us. If they all came in electronically to us, you know, we would not have, you know, the level of insight as to the use, also, of each of those properties. But, but certainly it would reduce, you know, we would just simply not be able to go back and track that to a specific unit. So we would have to assume, you know, they would, each person coming in with their application would have to say which platforms they were on, or if they were going to just do it through a phone number that they put on a website and then they would be remitting to us. And I think that, you know, but we would lose sort of the auditing piece that we do now as staff.
So what's, I mean, what's more important, I guess?
I think historically, our finance department has always thought that we garner more revenue by collecting it ourselves and getting to know the operators by ourselves and having that relationship. But I, you know, and, and it really was only Airbnb. So we were going to be in the business anyway, and then to try to divide out which was which just felt like people could just say, oh, it came through Airbnb, and we wouldn't ever be able to say, no, it didn't, because we would have no idea. That one, I think, just would require a little bit more research.
You got me with that point.
I think fiscal transparency is pretty important. But let's please give Councilmember Watson a chance to weigh in.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I like the idea of tracking it for, or using those, having everything run through those platforms, for all the reasons everybody's stated. And I think, I mean, ideally, you know, like a lot of stuff with technology, it's a total pain in the butt to figure out at first and get it all set up. But then, you know, hopefully that once it is set up, it becomes more streamlined and it's not so much of a burden on staff. And, yeah, I guess those are my only thoughts on that right now.
So, Councilmember Watson, I think that, I just want to be clear. Councilmember Matthews was, ended up saying, like, a no on that for transparency and reasons, as that is mine, and I believe that was your opinion, Alex, as well?
I think it has, we do have some people in the audience, and maybe they'll actually speak to that. We have two of them right, well, three, sitting all in a little group over there. And, but my feeling is that we individually should collect from them, because there's also another one called Home Away From Home. And how many other platforms are out there that we don't even know about? So I just know of four right off the bat, and we've listed two, three. So I think operators, and they'll tell us what they think in a few minutes, when they have the opportunity.
Okay, and I believe that in the discussion with the city manager talking about transparency and tracking and that being an issue because of all the vague reporting, Councilmember Vice Mayor Schaefer is now questioning the yes?
Yeah, or no. Yes, but no. Yeah, I'd like to maybe come back to this one after we hear public comment, because we have one more thing to talk about and then we're going to take comments. So I'm, I think I'm outweighed on that one, anyway. It's not going to sway my entire, you know, voting here. So I think I'm outvoted on that one, anyway, so.
Well, in the moment. But, so Councilmember Watson, does that, so are you keeping yours as a yes for now?
Yeah, could you please just explain to me again one more time why it's less transparent?
Yeah, I'm going to let the city manager do that. She'll do a better job. When we looked at this historically, the only platform, I'm going to look out here if they all start going, no, it's different now. But the only platform that would enter into an agreement to automatically collect the tax and remit it to the city was Airbnb. But they would only do so, they would send us one check quarterly, and it would not detail what properties or how much from each property that check, you know, reflected. So we would have no idea if that was five properties or if we were getting remitted from all 100 that, you know, filled the cap. So we just would have to take that at sort of face value as the right TOT. And at the time, and this, you know, many years ago, was not a comfortable scenario for a finance or the council.
Okay, that makes sense. Go ahead, David, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and just to add to that, the finance staff would then have to do the, you know, the legwork of auditing that, connecting the dots between what the operators are submitting as their, you know, their, whatever their rent rules were showing how many nights they stayed for, you know, for whatever the TOT was. And connecting the dots on the Airbnb side to make sure that everything balanced, that we were actually collecting what, you know, the operators were showing. And then with all the other sources of receipts for TOT, then it just creates, you know, multiple pathways as opposed to just one pathway. The operator comes in, pays the check, shows the accounting. That's just a more simplistic platform for the finance department.
Okay, yeah, that sounds dumb. I say we just keep it the same way, unless we hear a compelling argument from the community.
So I just looked it up. There's actually 12 platforms worldwide, but in the United States, there's actually eight functioning, different platforms where you could be on.
Okay, so it seems like we're four, we're four no's, four and a half no's. So I think that's pretty good. Until public comment, that could, that could change minds. All right, so the last one is, should the short-stay cap include an exemption for historic landmarks? Because currently, it does not.
Currently, it does not. And so what this exemption would look like is an exemption from the cap that the owners of historic landmarks would still have to come in and get permitted so that we can track them and make sure that we're getting payment and that sort of thing. But they wouldn't be counted towards the cap. The rationale for this is really as a means of supporting the adaptive reuse policies that we have for historic properties. And to, you know, embed in this ordinance that allowance. Right now, there are pretty broad allowances within the land use code for landmarked properties that come in and request specific, you know, adaptive reuses. And so a house in a neighborhood where you would expect to see residential uses might actually operate as an office building or a doctor's office. And those were kind of the original adaptive reuses that we were thinking about when we adopted these ordinances. But the land use code actually broadens it up and says, you know, or any other use that's necessary to maintain historic resource. Historic resources are a lot more expensive to maintain and operate than, you know, newer house. They're subject to a lot more regulations than your standard house. And so this would be a way of, you know, recognizing that and providing an automatic incentive for owners of historic properties to ensure that they have the revenues they need to maintain those properties. So staff would, staff would recommend that you do allow for this exemption. The Historic Landmark Committee was also in support of something akin to this when we discussed it.
Okay, Councilmember Stillman, I think it's your turn to go first.
Thank you. I agree. You talked about how historic properties were handled sort of separately, and that all started in the 70s when we were really worried about historic properties not being valued. And it was a whole time, and we were trying to figure out how to make sure that we continued to have an Arcata character, defining characteristics, that we had an area, a town that still looked nice, that you had, you just didn't, everything wasn't gone and that we became anywhere in America. And so we made that available so that you could have, you could have your dental office downstairs, you could have an apartment upstairs, you could do various things in your historic structures. And that still sits on the books. And I think this just should be another one that would be available, because in those days, we did not have vacation rentals. So it wasn't even a topic that would have been discussed when we were figuring out how to maintain and preserve historic structures. So we did, definitely saw a lot of doctor's offices, but continued to have residential in them, a variety of uses, so I definitely support this.
And I do, too, for a lot of the reasons that you talked about. And mostly because the Historic Landmark Committee recommended that we make this exemption. And I really feel like, at this point, why do we have these committees if we're not kind of taking their suggestions? I agree with what Councilmember Stillman said as well, so I'm okay to include an exemption.
Just out of curiosity, I mean, how many buildings do you think there, or permits do you really think there are? I mean, there's a couple that come to my mind that I can think of, but it seems that there probably aren't that many even that would be exempted, correct?
I can think off the top of my head of two that I know of that are historic properties that, you know, that would qualify for an exemption if one were created. And I can think of a couple of others that are likely, could be historic landmarks. And this may be an incentive for those properties to go ahead and list at some point if they, you know, if they are considering, you know, whether to try and operate a short-stay vacation rental as a means of income. If you're not currently a historic landmark and yet you qualify, that may be a good way of getting a permit if you're not, you know, becoming listed would be a good way of getting a permit if we're over the cap. So it's, you know, it's going to be a minor impact on the overall housing stock, a minor impact on, you know, historic, on, you know, the number of historic buildings that come in as short-stay rentals. But it could have a major impact on the, you know, operational revenue for each individual historic property.
So I just want to interject. Almost there might be a possibility for some of them to consider the Mills Act when they are coming in and thinking about short-stay and maybe using the Mills Act, and we can put some of those incentives together for more than one property.
Well, and the idea, the, we're, you know, our concerns are regarding housing, and since those will be available to be lots of other things, your restaurants, offices, so it doesn't affect, they could be not housing anyways, so this is all the same. Councilmember Watson?
You know, I remember when we talked about, I think the one exemption is the Chapman House, and Mike Wilson was very opposed to giving them an exemption. And, uh, Mike Wilson was very opposed to giving them an exemption. And, um, you know, some of the reasons he cited was that, like, most of the building is like not historic. It's like new additions and changes, um, and, you know, I think it, it just gets down to like, these are in neighborhoods. Um, and, you know, it's, uh, for, with that example, it's like you're turning an entire, you know, multi-unit building into a mini hotel. Um, and I just, you know, to me, I don't look at the historic property as a business that needs to be protected. Um, it's, uh, you know, it's like, what was our goal? It's to preserve it as a house, right? It's a house. Um, so, you know, I don't know, I don't think we should exempt it. Um, you know, at the end of the day, there's not that many of them. Uh, but, you know, I feel like they are fine, they still qualify as being owner occupied and being, having, you know, uh, long-term, long-term residence, um, and, uh, yeah. But again, as I'm talking about this, basically right now, because we're over the cap, somebody couldn't qualify for the exemption anyways, right?
Uh, they could, because if you are exempted, right, then you don't fall under the cap. So I think that's what Director Lawyer, you would have to be a listed property. So I think that's what Director Lawyer was referencing, is that if, if, if there was a historic property that was not yet listed, uh, it might incentivize them to list if they knew that they could actually get a permit uh, and have revenue coming into the structure that would help for, you know, offset the cost of that renovation. Uh, so yes, a historic, listed historic structure could get a permit because they would be exempted from the cap.
So I just wanted to, I just wanted, I wanted to correct about the Chapman House. There's only one structure on the Chapman House property. It was, there was an original garage there that was taken down and it was rebuilt, and there's an apartment on the second floor. The rest of the house is all original. Well, it depends on how, what year you're talking about. Maybe in 1870s, there was a wing, and then they added in 1890, the main house. So if you're thinking of it that way, then it was, you know, it's been added on to. But historically speaking, it's been that way for a long, long, long time. And most houses in Arcata, especially the settlement area houses, they have wings. They either have the back wing, the right wing, or the left wing of the house. And then, um, that was the original part of the house. Then they built the two-story parts, so you'll see sometimes it's the right back or side. And that's when they could afford additional money to build the rest of the house so they could live in it comfortably. So the Chapman House, if that's what Mike Wilson said, he made an error, cause it's only the garage that is new on that property. Well, the sidewalk too. I mean, they replaced the sidewalk, they had to do some things like that, you know, fencing, those kind of things. But, you know, we're required to, when we renovate a property, we're required to do the alley. We're required to do the sidewalk, you know, there are all these things the city wants us to do. They wanna make sure all our units are hooked up to the sewer system. And so if you look at it that way, you're going, oh my gosh, there's so much to do, when anytime you restore a house.
Okay, so, um, just Councilmember Watson, just so you know, for keeping track, and I'll, I'll summarize this in a minute. But for the historic landmark part, um, you are dissenting on that, just so you know.
Um.
And I'm just bringing it up, cause when we go eventually to the overall vote, I want you to know what you're voting on.
Yeah. No, I mean, I'll just, you know, um, it's, you know, if, if you guys wanna exempt it, that's okay, I'll, I'll go along. It's not that big of a deal, but, um, you know, just like my personal unpopular opinion is that, you know, old buildings are cool, um, but there's also this giant contradiction. Uh, we wanna build dense housing close to the plaza. And then, um, we basically take a, you know, a single or two-story building and say, okay, you can't touch this, we're never gonna move it ever. And it's gonna occupy prime space to build denser housing. Um, so that's just always something that's kind of, you know, stuck out to me, is, you know, kind of an odd contradiction. And, um, I mean, yeah, it's, it's neat to restore stuff and to go into it and be like, this is the way it was 200 years ago. Um, but we also have many examples of, you know, and I'm not sure if Alex was, you know, one of the people that did this. I know Julie Fulkerson does this, of, you know, these houses getting moved. You know, they can be moved and relocated to different areas of the city, and then that land can then be built for, um, you know, denser housing that's closer to the plaza and, you know, fits into this dream everybody has of Arcata being this, you know, great walkable city with, everyone has access to the plaza.
I did move the house, I moved, well, I was involved in moving two houses during the freeway expansion. Otherwise, they've been torn down, and we found a vacant lot, and we were able to do that. And we sold one lot and a newer house was built there. And in Arcata during the freeway time, a lot of buildings were moved from one place to another. And also in the sixties, when they were putting the expressway through, that was another time buildings were moved.
Yeah, I'm fine, if you guys, you know, that's how everyone feels, I'll go along.
Okay, so, alright, team, I'm going to attempt to summarize. I think we're only, we're only, um, suggesting three changes to the ordinance. So I'm gonna review what those are and make sure that I'm on the right track, and then we'll go to public comment. So the first change that I have that we have got consensus on, should the exemption for long-term tenancy be eliminated? Yes, so we'd like to eliminate that exemption. The second one would be to eliminate the phone number requirement. And then the third one was what we just discussed, and yes, make an exemption for historic landmarks. Does that track with everyone? Okay.
I just, just quickly, I know we agreed on, um, no cap on how many, uh, rentals a single person can have. Um, and I just wanna throw this out there, just like a last, last ditch effort. Um, what if we set it at 10? You know, that's basically 10%. We're saying no one person can own more than 10% of our entire short stay rental stock. Um, it's just, I don't know, just an idea, and it's, it's okay, we can just move on if no one, no one's interested.
Okay, well, we, you, you, you put it out there on the table, so we've got that. And then we'll do public input, and then we'll, um, we'll come back and see where we wanna go.
So can I mention one other thing? And that's about, um, Eureka is doing this right now. So they have decided that they're out of short stay, uh, rental income taxes, they're getting their T O T. They're gonna put 100% of that into their housing trust fund. And then from the motels and hotels, they're taking 1% and putting it into the housing trust fund. I'm just mentioning it, we don't have a housing trust fund. But I'm just mentioning that as a, uh, just information.
And we could definitely discuss that at goal setting and budgeting. Um, alright, let's open it up to public comment. Thank you for waiting so patiently. We will take in-person folks first, you don't need to take a number for this, you can just line up. Um, you've got three minutes, and then we will go to the online folks. Whenever you're ready.
Mary and Amber, um, I'm up here about the, um, clustering. And, um, with, with tru, with tru, with Trinidad in mind, and what it has done to that community, that residential community, I'd like you to, I'd like you to consider other possibilities, um, that, that haven't been mentioned. Um, if there are three, two or three houses, I'm talking about private houses that are turned into short stay rentals, not apartment houses. Um, if you have two or three in a line, maybe that's too many on a block. Um, maybe you can have a limitation on, uh, uh, maybe you could put, put a, a distance between the houses that could be short stay. Maybe you could have a limit of one to, one short stay a block. Or, um, uh, maybe not to have two next to each other. I'm just to spread them out, because when they cluster, it really changes the residential quality of a, of a, of a, of a street. And we do have that. Okay? Please consider it, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, um, my name is Shannon Yodowitz, and my husband and I own a historic lampart, um, landmark here in Arcata. Um, at this point, considering what you guys have discussed and the way you intend to vote, I'm not, I'm just reiterating things. Sure, how's that? Okay. Um, so I want to address, and, and, and I support the suggested historic landmark exemption from the short stay cap. Uh, I think it's important to preserve our architectural resources. I think it's what makes Arcata, significant part of what makes Arcata a lovely place to live. I think that if you take historic, um, properties and move them somewhere else and plop down condensed tall housing, you remove the incentive to be in that community, or at least a large incentive that, yes, you have housing, and you also have places that look like strip malls, and, um, I'm really going off script, and Joel told me not to do that. But, um, so the historic landmarks are a significant source of beauty, livability, and charm here. Um, they're also very expensive to maintain. And the city has historically provided incentives and ways for people who have a historic landmark or, uh, even just historic properties to turn them into, uh, doctor's offices or other buildings, um, so that they could be productive and, um, financially productive. And that needs to go beyond just the person who owns it currently. It needs to go beyond me to the next owner. That person needs to be incentivized to purchase it and then to be able to maintain it. Otherwise, they fall into disrepair, which was the state of our landmark, uh, prior to our purchase, prior to 2018. It was, I'm told, it was, do we, do we tear it down or do we rehab it? And fortunately, it's a, it's a beautiful, stunning property that, you know, part of the way to maintain that is by being able to Airbnb it. It's also Chapman House. So with that, I will say that it was built in 1874 and 1876. The only new construction on the property is the garage and the, and there's a studio above the garage. Other than that, it's 100% historic. And, um, so, um, also, it, it's, it has a very small impact. It's, landmarks have a very small impact on overall housing stock in the community. And I think that if you're balancing housing stock and the livability of the community, the historic resources are, are far outweigh the loss of a, such a small part of the housing stock. I also have opinions about, um, the, uh, the T O T.
That's actually your three minutes, but you could make Joel go give the opinions on the T O Ts.
He doesn't know, I'm the one that does them. So if you guys have any questions about T O T, I have answers.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Paul Patino, Arcata, south of Samoa, two doors from the Stinky Pinky, in case you didn't know. Um, my neighborhood is overwhelmingly single-family homes rented to multi-non-related tenants. And I, you know, I really don't care what people do in that regard, except for I had to put the sign in my window and it says, here's my emergency contact for my Airbnb that I live in, for everybody to know. But those people across the street that have four to six unrelated tenants in their homes have no sign, and nobody knows how to get a hold of them. And I thought, this is crap. This is not equity Arcata. This is inequity. And I really thank all of you for being reasonable about getting rid of the phone number. Either all of us have a phone number if we don't live there, or we rent it, or none of us. So thanks.
You are welcome.
My name's Bob Doran, uh, my wife and I run the Black Cat Hideaway here in Arcata. Uh, ditto what, uh, Paul said about the stupid little sign, some offense, but I, I wanna talk about the T O T. To me, i- it's a, it's a marketing device. It's, you compare the cost of our place with a, a similar property that is not, uh, covered by automatic, uh, deduction of your, your tax by Airbnb, cause we're, we're on Airbnb that if we're not on anything else, I don't know what, there's eight of them. There's V R O B, and I don't know what the other one, but we're, we're just use Airbnb. And it would be, it would simplify our lives, because we wouldn't have to set aside money for, to pay the taxes every four months. And furthermore, we would be able to compete with the people who are charging, that's, they're charging less money apparently. You know, when people look at our, our listing, they're going, how much money does this cost? Well, they don't know that we're paying the tax. And the next guy is not paying the tax because it's being connected, detected by, collected by the county. That's not fair, so. And I, I know it's, it's a little bit more paperwork for the staff, but, you know, that's what their, that's what their job is, to me. That's what the, the, you know, administration of, of money, I don't know, that's, that's my opinion. And, uh, the rest of the stuff, there's a bunch of stuff you covered there. It seems like that's the only major thing that I wanted to say. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joan Edwards, and I run an Airbnb out in, on 27th Street. And it's owner occupied, so, and I only do that because my house was built in 1862, and it has a very old electrical system, and I never rent it when I'm not home. So I had a huge issue with the phone number being posted on the street. I'm about, I don't know, quite a ways off the road, and I wasn't comfortable with that. In fact, argued with the person that told me I had to do it, and I said, I can't do it, it's an invasion of my privacy. But one of my issues about that, that I'd like to say, is that when there's an issue with a building that has a long-term rental, that there's a party or some disruptive behavior, they call the police, and the police deals with the people that are there. And it isn't, does not go to the landlord. So I feel like that whole argument that Airbnb's, that the landlord needs, or the owner needs to be able to be contacted, it seems like a non-issue, because we already have a police force that deals with disruptive behaviors. That's just my feeling, because I think if Airbnb owners need to put out their phone numbers, so should long-term landlords put their phone numbers on those buildings as well. So I'm in complete agreement with what they said. But I do wanna address the T O T. On my platform on Airbnb, it allows you to put tax. So they have a part of there that you say, I charge an occupancy tax of 10%, and I add that on, so that the people, when they look at it and they break down the booking, they, it says, this is what the room costs. This is the occupancy tax, this is a cleaning fee if you're gonna put that on. All those fees are listed, so you can put that on your platform. Your occupancy tax can be noted on the platform, to clear up that whole thing, so you can show that that's what you're spending. And it isn't then this hidden cost that doesn't let you be competitive to people that are renting at a lower rate. Just wanna say that. Anyway, thanks, you guys.
Alright, thank you.
I have to admit that I actually don't know that much about Airbnb or short-term rentals, only from what I've read. And so I just, I think you're on the, the right page with this, but keep in mind that, you know, you have a lot of young families that are trying to afford a house, maybe it's their first house. So they need flexibility from that standpoint, because things happen in life, and this is what I've read. They could lose their job, they could have, uh, one of their kids that has a, you know, health problem, and then all of a sudden, you know, they need, they need that income, um, to stay in that house. And it could also be a senior citizen that, um, you know, doesn't have much of a pension later on in life, um, and they have costs, and they need that flexibility. Otherwise, all of those examples have possibilities of losing their houses. And so I think that is sort of like one of the most important things to keep in mind. There's, there is a history of this in especially poor communities, uh, that are people that are living from paycheck to paycheck. It could be something as simple as, you know, as utilities that have gone up, uh, along with one of the things that I've said, major medical or loss of work, uh, any of those scenarios. So you need to, I think you're, I think you're sort of addressing that, but I'm just wanna, I wanna make sure that you're, um, you know, thinking about all those possibilities. I could say that from the cap standpoint, that somebody could say, from that standpoint, that is new into the system, that sort of the ones that got involved early in the process are holding the permits. And they could probably make the argument that it's, it's kinda unfair to them, because they'll never have that opportunity to, you know, get into the system. It's gonna be held by those early pioneers, I guess, in the Airbnb process. So, um, that's also something to keep in mind. So it's not a, it doesn't sound like it's, um, it's an easy decision to make on some things. It's, but it just, um, you know, ultimately, I think people- But it just, you know, ultimately, I think people need to be able to have some flexibility in keeping their houses. And you weigh that against the stories that you heard early on in big cities where some people that were really greedy that weren't even the owners of the house, they just got long-term leases and they rented properties out. And some of them made like hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I don't think that's the case in Arcata, but I think that's where the story was early in the process about the noise and greed versus someone who's just trying to survive and not lose their property. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. I am a long-term tenant in Arcata. And I live in a neighborhood that I know has at least two short-term rentals on my street, a couple of blocks away, which is great because they have little signs out there, nothing about a phone number. But you just kind of know that that's one of those places where people are coming and going. And it's sort of nice sometimes when I see people unloading and stuff, you know, I can greet them and have a conversation. I think phone numbers on a fence or whatever is not necessary, but I do think, as Alex Stillman pointed out, people who have a sign that's kind of promoting a place that people walking by might notice is not a bad idea. I would like to know, in terms of, you know, safety, you know, what houses on my street are being rented short-term so that if I see strangers coming around, it's, you know, somebody that's staying there and not somebody who's trying to do something else there. So a little bit of attention to let people know that your business is right there. Businesses have signs on their, you know, front windows all the time. And it could be the creative name of your little short-term rental or not. But I don't know if it should be mandatory, and I understand the concern about phone numbers. But I think, you know, identifying a place as a short-term rental is kind of a nice thing for the neighborhood.
Thank you, Joanne.
So I wonder if it's possible, oh, I'm sorry, that we could hear from the Chapman House on the TOT also. I know they've already spoken, but perhaps the other person could speak?
If the other person wants to speak, he's welcome to speak.
Hi, my name's Dana Quillman. I'm running for Arcata City Council. And I do have some opinions on everything that's been said tonight. On the long-term exemption, I'm opposed to it being ended. The reasons I heard didn't really sound very convincing. I think one of them was, oh, if a long-term renter is renting on the same property as, that there's a short-term renter, they don't like people coming and going. You know, the thing is, is that in Arcata, there's a lot of limitations for all renters, okay? Whether it be you can't have pets, or you can't smoke, or you can't have parties, or whatever. So I think that if somebody is going to apply to live in a place and it has a short-term rental and they're disclosed of that, that's their choice. So that's one thing. The other thing is that I feel like taking that exemption out is a little bit of an infringement on private property rights, in my opinion, to tell somebody, "Oh, you know, you have to do this, you know, you can't." And that goes in line with the operator's cap. I know that on South G Street, I think one of you mentioned, I think they call it the front porch. He's got several units. Now, I don't know if he lives on the property or not. But I think if you're going to have a cap of 100 or less, that 10%, that you could have, one person could have 10 of them, really? I think that maybe two or three should be a limit for everybody. Because why should, because like someone, like the gentleman just said, there might be somebody that wants to get in on this and they don't get to get on it because somebody has 10 out of 100? That's not logical to me at all. Very unfair. Signage. You know, I don't like the signage, but in a way, I do like the signage. Because I live in a neighborhood where everybody's got a second unit and they rent, you know, we have a million cars and, "Oh, you want to know your neighbors?" Well, every semester, there's a whole new set of them. So we don't get to know our neighbors anyway. So if you're going to have signs, and maybe you should have signs for everybody, because a lot of these people who have these rentals are out of town. And they have parties and they smoke and they, and they make noise. And, okay, a lot of these students that are renting. So maybe we should all have a sign so we can know who to call when, you know, their rental is. The other thing I want to say is that, is there a business license for each rental? So if a person has 10 units for short-term rental, do they have a business license for each one? Because they probably should. And while we're on it, maybe there should be a business rental, a business license for every rental that a person owns in town also. I don't know if you have that as a requirement. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I guess you've been badgered into speaking, so let's hear it.
Julie Yodowitz, I don't want to be disrespectful to Ms. Stillman, but my wife does the TOT filings for us, so I don't think I can answer, provide any input or information. Sorry.
All right, thank you. I imagine we have folks online.
We do. So our first online speaker is Raylina. Go ahead, Raylina.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
We can.
All right. So I just wanted to bring the council's attention to just some of the data and statistics for the short-term rentals in Arcata. So this is coming from AirDNA, which is taking data from the API of Airbnb. So in Arcata, 72% of the short-term listings are on Airbnb, 5% on VRBO. And so there's a whole plethora of data to look at the average daily rate, occupancy rate, and revenue. So looking at the revenue for September 2020, we've got people, the average coming in is around $4,000 a month with anywhere from 7,000, 6,000, 4,000, 3,000 coming in, depending on the rental size. So, you know, per bedroom, it's broken down. There's some, you know, five-plus bedrooms bringing in 17,000 a month for their Airbnb. And this is real-time data from September 1st, 2022. Looking at this revenue and the possibilities there, you know, I don't want to discount the, just the gross amount of money that's coming in for people with multiple Airbnbs. I think it's appropriate for someone to have a single Airbnb for supplemental income. I myself Airbnb'd my apartment in Denver when I first started my business and made over $14,000 in nine months. And that's kind of what started my entrepreneurship. So, you know, there's real value in that if you're on a fixed income or you're using this kind of to supplement your retirement, or even your rent, renting out a bedroom. However, looking at the data, the majority of Airbnbs are multiple-unit owners. And so, you know, to the point that some other folks have made, having a cap doesn't really address, you know, these kinds of sort of like short-term rental monopolies. So rather than implementing a cap, what I would, I think this, you know, begs a larger discussion and probably another agenda item or, you know, a future project for the council. But in essence, you know, by implementing larger fees to have a short-term rental outside of one, this could be a way to fund a future housing trust fund, for instance, using that fund not only to help with, you know, general housing trust funds, but to incentivize people to revert their short-term rentals back into long-term rentals. So...
Raylina, that's your three minutes. Thank you.
Okay. And just for reference, this is from AirDNA. But I would suggest diving into that as well as seeking out the API for Airbnb in order to get some more of those hard numbers.
Okay, thank you.
There is no more online public comment. There was a couple of calling. Oh, we do have one more. Okay. There's been a couple that have gone up and down, so I don't know if they got kicked off and aren't getting back on. But go ahead, Commander.
Apologies for that title. My name is Jeffrey Scott Sterling, local resident of Arcata, running for city council as well. The charm of Arcata Plaza and the Arcata needs to be preserved. We don't want to lose, we don't want to lose that. But we want to expand and grow and make sure we take care of our historic beauty. So putting caps and stopping our beauty and our charm is dangerous, I think. But thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there's no more online public comment.
Okay, so we are going to take a quick five-minute break. And I do want to keep it at five because we need to finish this up and we have two more items. All right. Okay, we are going to be coming back into session. Councilmember Watson, are you on as well?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, great. Just making sure we're all here. Okay, so we have a couple more things to do to get through this. And so we heard a lot of public comment. Thank you. Does anything, my question is, does anything that you heard today change your thoughts?
I have one, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I was being very animated about it. I apologize. No, I just wanted to say that I think that we should cap the number of permits one owner can have. And that's per property, right? That's not, or is that per unit on a property? Or would that be per property that they're renting out?
You could set the cap based on the property. Right now, the permits are issued per unit. And so, for instance, we have one property owner who has, you know, multiple properties. I think she owns about three properties. One of the properties has a 12-unit apartment complex on it. Of those 12 units, the majority of them are short-stay vacation rentals. And so she has multiple permits on that one property. And so if you crafted a limitation, you could make that limitation based on the total number of permits, as Councilmember Watson suggested, a total of 10 permits. Or you could cap it based on the number of properties that any one owner could put into short-stay vacation rental operation. It would be up to you.
So what would you like that to be?
I like the idea of, and so then, I mean, obviously, then if somebody has 12 permits now, that would be grandfathered. now, that would be grandfathered in if we said 10 was the max. Yeah, I think that's pretty overly fair, honestly. I think 10 is why I wrote five, but that was more thinking about the properties total. Yeah, I would, if other people are interested, I, you know, I'm happy with what we came up with before, and I would go forward with that, but I would maybe suggest adding, yeah, a cap of 10 permits for individual units.
So are you referring to the one person that he's bringing up that has 12 and then has several others, that that person can only have 10 under their name?
Well, right now, they'd only, I mean, they'd be grandfathered in, but as those dwindle, they would be stopped at 10. And if anybody wants to add more, they would be stopped at 10.
But that's the idea. So for me, let's say if I was to be in this business, and I had five over here, and I had five there and two over here, and maybe three over there, I could only have 10 in my name, ever. That's what you're going for. That's what you're saying.
In the long run.
In the long run, yeah.
Okay. Which item is that you're going to fix in here?
Well, we're just talking about it. So that is, that is on packet page...
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
And again, I'm happy to go forward with what we discussed before, if we're, you know, not wanting to make changes from that, but I am, yeah, I think that sounds more than fair, and based on some comments that we heard tonight, I think makes sense.
Yeah, and I feel like 10 is pretty reasonable. And, you know, I definitely support what Alex is saying. It's, you know, we want to support business owners, and, I mean, 10 vacation rentals, you know, we know the reason people do them is instead of renting to a college student, or renting to another member of the community, is because they're typically a lot more profitable. So I think, you know, allowing somebody to have 10 is, you know, should be a pretty good business for them still.
And this is moving forward. Everybody that's already, okay, all right.
Did you have an opinion on that, Councilmember Matt?
I'm willing to entertain that as long as it's from now forward, and not penalizing people that already have properties.
We can't take people's permits away, right, unless they, I mean, don't pay taxes or don't, I mean, what, how could we take somebody's permit away? I mean, is there a provision for that? Or like, what, now I'm just thinking about it, but...
Oh, that's a legal question?
Yeah, the legal question is whether the permits have a fixed term, in which case then it would be at the end of the term. And what David is telling me is that they are automatically renewed, so they are termed, but then it's an automatic extension. So the answer is, we really can't take it away short of a violation of the permit conditions.
All right, good. That's what I wanted to make sure of, that they didn't have to renew and then not be able to.
Yeah, or alternatively, you could amend the provision of the automatic renewal, but I would suggest looking at that maybe the next time you visit the ordinance.
So I just want to clarify transit occupancy tax.
Wait, can we, let's finish this up, please, just so we know where we're headed. Okay, then we can do that. I just, it's, I really, just to put it out there, don't believe in putting it out there and taking it back. Like, we've done that before. It doesn't look well for us, so I wouldn't want to entertain that at all. Just my opinion. I'm still a no on this, but it's, I mean, there's a lot of compromising, so it won't, I'm not going to not vote on it because of that, but I just, for the record, I'm keeping my vote as no, but I'm going to be outvoted, so that, you know, that's okay. Did you want to state your opinion on this one, Councilmembers Dillon?
No, I think I did before. I just wanted to clarify transit occupancy tax, and that we're going to expect the individuals that are operating their businesses to pay their transit occupancy tax to the city, and that we aren't going to go, as suggested here, the city pursue contracts with other platforms. I want to make sure that we agree that our business people, in short, say we're going to collect their own.
Okay, and I just want to point out, as the council answers her question, that this is something that won't go into the ordinance. You're providing direction to staff because the transit occupancy tax now has, you know, its own provisions for who it applies to, and it applies to, you know, businesses in Arcata. So it applies to all of these that are, that are being used as the short-stay rental, because that's a business. So that's the presumption. And really, what the discussion is about is, is direction to the, you know, city in terms of how it should be implemented, and how the shorts, the TOT should be collected. And so it can come back at the next meeting when, you know, or whenever the ordinance is brought forward with the revisions for your consideration. I think that the direction you give tonight is really helpful, but it's not something that needs to be decided immediately as part of this.
Well, I did ask the Chapman House on the break, and I was told that, you know, they get bookings through Airbnb, but they also get repeat people that call them directly through their website, or after they've come on Airbnb, they contact them directly. And because they then collect the tax, but it's not through the organization, any organization. Airbnb does send them the tax, but if there, so you have to keep track of your own records, and there may be people that have that same situation, are being contacted over and over, and they have to be honest about giving their tax to the city, otherwise they don't have to. Not anything we have to discuss, but direction should be, from, I would say, individuals pay.
I just want to go, that is what the consensus was, unless we're changing it.
No, I just want to go back to the, what we were talking about.
Long-term?
Long, no.
Permits per owner.
Permits per owner, and I, I kind of, I think I'm agreeing with the mayor. I think that we had a really good path forward, that we were going to kind of revisit it in a year. Was that what we had agreed on?
I think Vice Mayor Schaefer said to revisit it in a year, but it wasn't specific.
I was happy with that. It doesn't seem like there was an extraordinarily large group that had a large group of properties, so.
So I think that's why, you know, we consider doing it preemptively before it becomes a problem. And that's why we talked about creating a cap for this. It's really the same scenario. You know, before, we didn't have 100, I think there was like 50 or 60 maybe registered in the city vacation rentals. And then as soon as we, you know, imposed some kind of limit on it, then all of a sudden, everybody started applying, and now we're over our cap. So, and again, you know, as we pointed out, that, you know, we can't take the permits back. So, you know, what if instead, you know, we ask if, I don't know, you know, if we, I don't know, we just ask the staff to keep an eye on it, and if we get five people, I don't know, you know, some kind of reasonable number, where we kind of approach that, and then it comes back to us.
Yeah, that's exactly, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, it's okay, no, it's okay.
But that's, that's, I agree with that. I think that, keeping an eye on it, and if it becomes a problem, then we bring it back.
So maybe we...
That's, I agree too, just, just to not cut you off, but just to also say, you know, I, that's the nice compromise in there.
Yeah, cool. So, yeah, you know, I think we could just trust staff to, you know, I think, I feel like that they probably understand what we're looking at, and just to, you know, request that, that, you know, if they feel like they see, you know, a lot of people, or, you know, a few people gathering up a lot of permits, that they let us know. Thanks.
I think that's great.
So I'm going to attempt to set up the motion. So if somebody would like to make this, it would be that we would like to add an exemption for long-term, we would like the exemption for long-term tenancy to be eliminated. We would like the ordinance that requires a phone number to be, we'd like that to be eliminated. And we would like the historic landmarks to be included in the exemptions.
So I moved.
Seconded.
So we have a motion and a first, and we have done our public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Good work, you guys. That was a lot. Okay. So that takes us to new business, to have a public hearing to adopt Resolution Number 223-18, authorizing for submission of an application for funding under the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program 2022, Notice of Funding Availability, and the Execution of a Grant Agreement and Any Amendments There Too, and Adopt Resolution Number 223-20, Authorizing Approval of a Contract Agreement with the City of Fortuna Subgrant of its 2019 PLHA allocation. And that is a lot, so could we please have a staff report to clarify?
Yeah, and I have to apologize for the length of that title. I'm also going to be exceedingly brief, because I'm sure if Emily, Emily were still sitting in the audience, she'd be throwing daggers at me with her eyeballs. The permanent local housing allocation is a direct allocation that the state has initiated through SB2 funds that were generated in 2019. We have a couple years of funds that were eligible for, and so what, that's what the first resolution, 223-2, 223-18, rather, authorizes, is the application for those monies that we are non-competitively authorized to get. And then the friendly folks at the Friendly City were not able to use their 2019 allocation, and so 223-20 authorized the city manager to enter into an agreement to receive their funds, to use them in the City of Arcata. In order to use these funds, we have to demonstrate to HCD that we have a plan. You'll find that plan as, I guess, Attachment B, starting on packet page 46. And effectively, what the plan does is outlines what the eligible uses are, what the total amounts of funding are that we'll get over the course of the PLHA program years. And then what we're proposing to use these for, after we had the initial scoping meeting, and after digging into the detail on to how to use these funds in our community, we realized that the most efficient way to use these funds, and the way that is going to be most effective, we believe, is to put the funds into a project that's shovel-ready. And so what the plan does is say that we are going to use these funds for either pre-development or development costs for a project that will create that affordable housing in our community. I've already spoken with a couple of potential projects, and we don't need to commit to the project at this point. We would come back to you and commit to that project. We just need to talk about, in, at this time, what we would use those funds for, the type of activity. And I think those are the highlights that I wanted to point out to you, oh, with the one exception that this wonky Resolution 22318 is the state's required format. If you read this in detail, you probably were scratching your head as I was the first time I read it. There are several things on here that say, if applicable, that do not apply to what we're doing. We are advised that we may not change this resolution, that if we do, it will slow down the process and maybe cause us to have to do it again. So I'm going to recommend that you adopt it as is. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. It is a public hearing, so if you open it and receive public comment on this, that would be great.
Okay, we will, let's, since we do have a member on Zoom, let's do questions, like roll call style. So, Councilmember Stillman, do you have any questions on this?
No, the only thing I was thinking about is that I sort of gather that Fortuna didn't have the ability to move forward on this, and is, I don't know even if they had any projects that would have been viable for this, or if they need to contract with someone to assist them.
Yeah, that's, that's a possibility. This is the last year that the 2019 funds are eligible. After this year, those funds go away, and so Fortuna has said, go ahead and take our 2019 funds at this point. We've also partnered with Fortuna, you know, they have a very small staff, and that's coming from me. And, you know, we've partnered with them before on, you know, like the CDBG CV money to help, you know, facilitate activities in Fortuna, and we've committed to doing that with them on this as well, to help them build the capacity, provide them, you know, staff reports, you know, the, you know, any of the resolutions that we put together, and, you know, just, you know, someone to bounce ideas off of as well. And so we're hoping that they'll be able to use their additional allocations for 2020, and moving forward, but they may just get to the point at some point and say, you know, look, take, take all of our money.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Watson, do you have any questions on this or comments?
Yeah, Director Lloyd, could you please just cover some of the, as you described it, if applicables that you said that we're advised not to change?
Yeah, just briefly on packet page 44, bullet items five through 10, state if applicable, the council would be, you know, adopting this resolution. So this is under, not the recitals, but the actual resolution part. And so, for example, bullet number six says, if applicable, applicant certifies that it has or will subgrant some or all of its PLHA funds to another entity or entities. We are not planning to do that. It doesn't apply to us. But the state has advised us that if we choose to delete that statement from this resolution that does not apply to us, that their legal team may reject it.
Okay, I see. I think I understand what you're saying. And then my only other question was, one second. Two, packet page 53, I guess on the resolution, yeah, on the resolution. Number five, it says, the City of Arcata hereby authorizes the city attorney to make minor modifications to the contract agreement as necessary. And I was just, you know, like, can we get an idea, or like, what's the definition of a minor modification?
Yeah, I'll start, and City Attorney Diamond may follow up on that. We've included in the packet, you know, starting on packet page 55, the subgrant contract. And so this is sort of boilerplate language that we received from the state. And so, you know, you're able to see exactly what it is that we're proposing to commit to by adopting that Resolution 22320. But if, as we get into it, there are, you know, minor language changes that need to be made so that it's acceptable to the HCD, so that Fortuna can actually, you know, subgrant its money to us, then we are asking for authorization at the city attorney level to make those changes, as opposed to bringing it back to the council and having to revise, go through the process of, you know, another public hearing. So I can't necessarily define to you specifically what a minor amendment might be, but it could be as simple as, you know, we left in a boilerplate language that we need to change to, you know, read Arcata instead of insert, you know, jurisdiction name here.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. That's all my questions. Thanks.
I just want to be, is it my turn? Okay, sorry. I just want to make sure that all we're doing is adopting these resolutions. We're not like picking and choosing which of these things we...
Yeah, so we're not picking the specific project. If you look at the plan, starting on packet page 46, under the purpose, it does outline all of the different eligible activities under this funding. But then instead of allowing for all of that flexibility, we've really narrowed it down to just the pre-development and development costs for a project. So the PLHA allowed for all kinds of flexibility, including, you know, programs to create, you know, first-time homebuyer programs for moderate-income people, for example.
Yeah, so those are the kind, I mean, those are the kind of things I'd like to see, but that's like a different discussion, correct?
Yeah, so those, those kinds of things, I mean, we just really do not have the capacity to run a program like that. I think it would be, you know, great for our community to have better, you know, a program like that. We've talked about it for a number of years, trying to create a moderate-income homebuyer program. In addition, the housing costs right now and the, the income levels for, for moderate income, there's a little bit of a disconnect, and so it would still, we'd create a program, we'd have a bunch of money, and then we would hope that people would come. We have a limited time to be able to spend this money. We know that we can find a project that meets the requirements, and that we can spend that money within the next couple of years, and meet the timelines to make the most use for these funds. We don't know how many moderate-income homebuyers are out there that would take advantage of those programs, or whether the market is even going to be suitable for a program like that. And so instead of... And so instead of, you know, attempting to develop a program that we don't have the staff capacity to run, that we don't know we can fully implement, and then lose the money ultimately, we're suggesting that we put all of our eggs into the one basket where we know we can quickly infuse all of that money into a project that's going to have an impact on housing in our community.
Fair enough.
And just if it helps, just a lot of the housing meetings that I'm in, the pre-development funding is an issue, and that's one of the things that stops a lot of projects. So I think actually it will be really helpful for housing.
Great, thanks for that.
Sure. Vice Mayor Schaefer. Okay.
Did I skip you?
No.
I was going to make a motion.
Oh, go for it.
By reading the title that we have here to move.
It's a long, beautiful title.
So I move that we adopt Resolution Number 223-18, authorizing the submission of an application for funding under the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program 2022, Notice of Funding Availability, NOFA, and the Execution of a Grant Agreement and any amendments thereto, and adoption Resolution Number 223-20, authorizing approval of a contract agreement with the City of Fortuna sub-grant of its 2019 PLHA allocation.
Second.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, so now would be time for public input on this. We'll go ahead and start with people in person first.
Hi, I don't get the agenda packet information, but you said on page 46, the listing of existing projects that this money would be doing pre-development application for. There's some existing local projects on low-income housing. Is that, there's specific projects?
No specific project yet, those will be coming back. If we, if one comes forward that we're looking at, then that will come back.
Okay, thank you, I just needed to understand that, thank you.
Do we have anyone online?
No online public comment for this item.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Watson?
Aye.
Great, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Sure. So next, we have to discuss and consider the adoption of Resolution Number 223-19, establishing regulations governing sidewalk vending on city property and right-of-way. And we've got Environmental Services Director Emily Sinkorn, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. So here, a resolution before you today for your input and consideration is really to create an opportunity to have more specific regulations and rules around sidewalk vending while also really creating and providing opportunities for entrepreneurship and ensuring safe sidewalk access. So one of the key things that we've noted is that there is a newer state law, Senate Bill 946, the Safe Sidewalk Vending Act, that really has a goal to end criminalization of sidewalk vending, of fruit stands. And this has been a really larger issue in Southern California. And it really outlines opportunities for local jurisdictions to set regulations within that law, either by ordinance or resolution, to really ensure safety, public health, and safety and welfare, while also really wanting to make sure that we're allowing for vending of food, beverages, merchandise for entrepreneurship. So that is what is before you today. This sidewalk vending is really defined as vending from one's person or a cart, anything not with a motor, so it does not apply to food trucks. And also, this really would not be associated with special event permits. And so we have a really robust and successful special event permit program. And so vendors that we're used to vending at the farmer's market or North Country Fair or Main Street Arts Arcade events, those are covered under those permits. So this would be for individual businesses out on the street or right-of-way on their own. The city has received numerous comments or questions from community members and business owners in the downtown area in particular about, you know, what are the regulations for sidewalk vending? And hoping for just clear guidance, both, you know, mostly from the city. And also have had conversations of business owners that said, "I got, you know, my start of having a vending booth, and that was a great way for me to enter the business and have an idea of how to move forward." So our goal for drafting this resolution is to make findings for regulating sidewalk vending consistent with state law and really outline that clear pathway for vendors. Our existing municipal code allows for really regulating the sale of merchandise and food on city properties through a permit. And then also really outlines that the city manager has the opportunity to grant those permits with formalizing a resolution that outlines those regulations thus by resolution. So we're seeking not to update the code, but to adopt a resolution that would outline those regulations. And it's similar to a resolution that was adopted in 2012 for our special event program. So we have in the staff report and on the packet page, let's see, I don't have that in... Sorry, don't have that in exact packet page. On 125 is the resolution that starts out, that lays out our findings. I do have, staff has one suggested addition to the draft resolution, and that was provided to the council members in hard copy. And then we are pulling it up here in the chambers. And so the city has an existing plaza vending program that is the regulations for both food trucks and sidewalk vendors. And so our suggested addition to what is in your packet is for consistency with that current regulation and that stationary sidewalk vendors within the interior section of the plaza would be designated to three areas that would be on a first-come, first-served basis daily. And really to ensure that on a daily basis, there's really safe and clear pedestrian travel through the plaza. Other suggested operating requirements are really ensuring that we have, you know, protection for emergency access, ADA access along sidewalks. These are all findings and regulations that the city can adopt per this state law and are in, yeah, so I think that covers what I really hope to present. If this resolution would be adopted, our aim would really be to provide education to current sidewalk vendors about what the pathway is now for being able to get a permit, the process for a business license, and other requirements. And then we also hope to come back to the council in the near future with updated regulations in a resolution for our food truck vending program as well. And I'm happy to take any questions or suggestions.
I think I have a stupid question, I'm sorry. If my kids want to have a lemonade stand on the corner of my street, do they need to have a permit? I'm sorry, it's a stupid question.
[laughing]
Is it during Lemonade Day, is it during that program?
Maybe not, that's not, maybe it's tomorrow, and maybe they want to sell hot chocolate, I don't know, but...
You know, I think technically, if you are on your private property and you're having a lemonade stand, like, that is great. Technically, for any, you know, sale or action that's happening in the public right-of-way, we have either the encroachment permit process. If you're putting up a ladder to paint a private building, you know, that is also kind of through that process. So, but there's a lot of informal commerce that occurs, and that's what makes our communities really inviting and engaging.
For the record, my kids would not really have a lemonade stand.
Well, so on Saturday, there were at least nine vendors around on the corners of the plaza that were not part of the farmer's market. And the farmer's market has signs, you can't bend down there. So they were over by Caravan of Dreams, that was one. There was one in Between Cars, they were in front of probably District 7. There was somebody on the corner by the post office. Then you get over to Rio, there was two or three of them there. Then there were two across the street by Plaza, and there was another down further. So there was, I counted about nine.
And thank you, there is one, you know, key question that has come up. And what is able to be regulated under the state law is having a distance, vending a distance away from an existing permitted special event, so that being farmer's markets or a permitted event on the plaza, for example, or in another location where, you know, perhaps on the previous day, the vendor could locate there, but during that special event needing to be 200 feet away is what we proposed in the resolution.
And that's happened during, when Arcata Main Street has had their arts, there have vendors, they're down a little bit here and a little bit there. They're asked to come in and join, but they don't want to pay a fee.
Yeah, if you turn to page 129 in your packet and the operating requirements, we'll list kind of some of the basic requirements. That vending would be prohibited within 30 feet of a street intersection, 20 feet of a fire hydrant, call box, transformer, 20 feet of any driveway. And then you get down into, you know, 200 feet of permitted farmer's market special event or area designated for temporary use.
Well, my guess, nobody had a permit, nobody paid any insurance. We have a group of them that are in the flower bed right next to Caravan of Dreams. They have their succulents, I think that's what they have there, succulents.
Right, so this would be the regulation.
I thought maybe I should put a bench there, and then they could operate off of a bench.
Policy regulation for us to enforce that those would not be areas for vending.
So I guess that's my question, is like, do we have the capacity to actually enforce this? I mean, we can't even enforce keeping dogs off the plaza, can we? I mean, is this something that's going to be, does it have teeth?
You know, I would say this is an opportunity to have a clear pathway on paper. And I think the first thing is providing that education on, here is the pathway. Do you need assistance with that? And, you know, our Environmental Services Department has, you know, some limited capacity for that. I think there's opportunities, hopefully when the council hears the next meeting with update on the Community Ambassador Program in the downtown area, that could be another education piece that perhaps they could provide. And then there are the administrative citation parameters that relate back to the code that could be carried forward. And again, it is what our staff and what the police department has capacity for. But I think the first thing is really providing that education for, here's the pathway.
Perfect, thank you.
I wanted to ask, and I guess I did see the definition of vending does mean obviously selling something. And so I just, what comes to my mind is I just know that there are a few local organizations that offer, you know, free meals or whatever on the plaza. And so that would not be affected by this, if they're not selling it? Yeah, food, not bombs, yeah. Yes, people, no bombs. Yeah.
I would say there, for some, some of those events are of more spontaneous events, and we may not fall under, you know, that category. As this definition is written, it's sort of as the act of conveying or transporting goods or food. You know, so that is one of the type of organizations. Great, yes, thank you. Thank, so back to what my first comment was of, those type of events often fall under more of the spontaneous events category that a permit is not needed for.
What are we, you looking for for us? Are we making a resolution? No, this is just a...
If you have input on any of the current, what is drafted as operational requirements or requirements to get a permit, and then staff does suggest adding this item D for operational requirements that speaks to having three specific designated locations for sidewalk vending within the interior of the plaza, staff would suggest adding as amended or as amended during this meeting, kind of in your motion for approving the resolution.
All right, Councilmember Watson, do you have anything?
Yeah. You know, it's definitely worth, there's no harm in passing this and seeing how it goes and amending it later. My, you know, the question that immediately comes to mind is, what led to the creation of this resolution?
I think initially, it was making sure we were in compliance with updated state law.
And then I think the next impetus was hearing from downtown business owners and community members asking, you know, questions, current special event permit holders asking questions about what the city's regulations are. And per state law, the city needing to have regulations on the books that meet that state law in order to provide that education or enforcement.
Yeah, I mean, sure, that makes total sense, like, if you're paying...
So the state law requires us to create this?
The state law, the state law outlines what a city can and can't do. And there's some things that the city cannot do without adopting its regulations via ordinance or resolution. And one of those, you know, is requiring vendors to not be in certain areas or to be in certain areas.
So we're not required by state law to make it. And we got input from the community saying they wanted it. And so that's why we made a resolution.
Well, I can add in a little bit of context from my point of view. I've received a lot of complaints and concerns about vending, you know, just for a variety of reasons, let's just say, in specifically in the plaza area. And so that's been from, you know, from citizens and from business owners. And so when I would go back and ask, hey, what are the policies on vending? Because I'm sure that you've noticed, there's people, like, we've talked about vending everywhere in a lot of places that are not appropriate or safe. And so when I would come back and ask those questions, I was told, there's no, we're not really enforcing anything right now because our current policies are outdated. And so this is an update or an attempt to come, you know, create policies that are currently acceptable within state guidelines to address this problem. And ideally enforce it.
Right, so where I'm coming from is this kind of process, you know? And I know, you know, recently, there's been this emphasis placed on the city council, city manager, form of government, right? And so, you know, by law, you know, in Brown Act, the staff can only take direction per a majority vote of three council members. So, you know, for one council member to come forward and say, well, I got all this feedback from the community, and then the staff, you know, basically turns that into a resolution, I mean, is that an opportunity that's offered to each council member? Any council member can come forward to staff and say, I think this is a problem, will you please write a resolution? I'm just trying, you know, like, what is our standard procedure? You know, is it normal for, you know, some community concerns to automatically turn into a resolution? Or should that be discussed first by the council to then decide if we should give that direction to staff?
Well, I just want to clarify, and I don't think this is going to make it better, it might make it worse for you, but it's just how it is. Is when I brought that question up, I wasn't the one, it wasn't because I brought it up, it was already in process. So that was the answer I got. This is something that we've been working on, we need to create updated policies. So I don't know how, but it was...
Yeah, what I'm hearing is we actually didn't need to create and update the policy. It wasn't required by the state. And then what you just described is that the staff is already working on this without any direction from the council. So it's a great idea, I support it, let's move it forward. But applying this to any other decision, imagine this was a decision you didn't disagree with, maybe, or you did disagree with, your other council members, you know, went to the staff and wanted it, or some community members brought it forth and the staff started working on it. It's just... community members brought it forth, and the staff started working on it. It's just not the way things are supposed to come to the council. You know, the staff is, it's not in our goals. You know, it's, our system is that the staff uses city resources on things that they're direct to by the council. So it's a great idea. Let's move it forward. But the process, you know, how it came about and how it got to us is concerning to me. Thank you.
But I heard our staff say that they had gotten this information. They wanted to be in compliance with city, with California law. And, and so they started to move forward. It's definitely an issue. And I think it was, I think it's good for us to try to stay up to date on California law and what is happening throughout California so that we are in the same place that other cities are throughout California.
Well, I just want to speak to Councilmember Watson. To your point on process, it's been my experience, and long before I was mayor, is that, you know, staff is in the trenches day to day. So a lot of ideas that are brought up for us to consider are generated by them. The ideas that come forth aren't 100% council ideas. And so this, you know, looks like that was another one. It's brought before us, and it's certainly our prerogative to vote it down and say, no, we don't want to do that. So I think that, you know, I've seen since I've been here for two years, a combination of the way that things make it forward to the council is a combination of staff seeing a need for something and bringing it to our attention, as well as us seeing a need from our constituents and bringing it to their attention.
No, I definitely agree with you. And to me, it's the difference of bringing in an idea to the council for us to decide if that's how we want to spend taxpayer resources versus the staff, you know, independently using resources to create a resolution that may or may not get passed. And, you know, the much more efficient way, the less risky way, is just to bring the idea to the council and say, is this something you want us to spend? And I, you know, I can see all your faces, by the way. So I can, you know, to see if that's something that we actually want to proceed with. And, you know, this kind of goes back to this long, you know, established criticism amongst the community that they feel like, you know, the staff is in charge and running things and bringing things to the council to rubber stamp. And, you know, that's where my concern is. You know, I just believe that, you know, the power lies with the council for the decision-making. You know, unless it's a goal, you know, we should be, you know, making those decisions. So.
I just don't see about, I just, I'm not sure how discussing something for 20 minutes is rubber stamping. I mean, we're having discussion. It's not rubber stamping. It's having a conversation.
Well, most of this conversation has been me about me questioning the process.
No, I talked about lemonade stands.
I understand that, too. So do you think we can move on with this?
Yeah, I'm ready to move on. Like I said, I was going to express my thoughts.
So I'm going to go ahead and introduce this resolution, 223-19, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, establishing regulations governing sidewalk vending on city property and rights away. I'm not going to read all the warehouses unless you want me to.
I think you just need to say as amended in today's meeting.
Okay, as amended at this meeting.
Second. Okay, well, I just, I did have a question. Do we know how much the permits will be? Because I know they're supposed to be a reasonable price. I was just curious about that.
Yeah, we proposed having that be a nominal fee. It is not in the resolution as our intention is that it would be adopted by the council every year in the master fee schedule. Our, you know, initial proposal right now is at $10. It's a nominal fee, but that, you know, the requirements are a lift in other regards of having a business license and, you know, meeting insurance requirements. So that is where our staff are considering right now, and that will come to you in the next master fee schedule update.
And that is something, if you're at the community center and you have an event there and you're selling, then everybody has to have a business license. And what happens with Gobert Days, and it happens downtown with the art market that Main Street's been putting on. So it'll, it'll be interesting to see how this works and how people who are on the corners and they just show up. And what, I noticed that one business person has closed his business, but he was in between cars selling this weekend his goods. And it does affect brick and mortar. We have a lot of brick and mortar businesses, and they feel like they're paying their fair share, they're paying their interest, they're paying their taxes, they're paying for their rent, et cetera. And then they have somebody show up on their corner or in their, next to their doorway, selling pants. I mean, one of the businesses, why are they selling shirts and pants and their used clothing? And it's right outside our store, and we're open all day. And how can they be there? And so I'm thinking it's a disruption to some of our businesses who are paying their fair way.
Okay, let's go. We have, we do have a motion and a second. And so let's go ahead and do public comment, please.
Hello again. I was just walking around town earlier today before I bicycled over for this meeting. And I do notice, especially at farmer's markets and other special events potentially, that there are outside people selling things on sidewalks. And it's, to me, a concern about, you know, ADA access. We talked about earlier in the meeting sidewalk improvements. It's, I think it's really important for people to get their start, and that new state law seems to want to promote not hampering, you know, startup businesses or sidewalk businesses, but doing it in a way that is, that blends in better in a community or whatever. And I just really think a lot of the vending that's happening currently is kind of hodgepodge and dangerous in terms of safety. There's also, you know, issues about, like, bicycle parking is inadequate, and a lot of people have the bike racks actually on the sidewalk right next to where the vendors are. And then everything gets really, really crowded. And, you know, if we ever move to a really wonderful opportunity for a downtown that's car-free, or car-free a lot of the times, especially during events, then that really would open up some space on the street for those people to practice their business. And so I, I think it's important that you do this, and I think keeping up with what state law is promoting is good. And I do agree that there's a lot of issues with what's currently going on, on and around the Plaza, from vendors to dogs, to what people were talking about earlier tonight in their concerns. So, yeah, let's try and put it all together in a, in a way so that it works for all of us and doesn't ostracize people who are really trying to do something for themselves. But keep the sidewalks clear.
Thank you. There is no online public, oh, wait, there is one online public comment. Raylina, go ahead, Raylina.
Hi. So I had the privilege this year of being the coordinator for the Friday Night Markets in Eureka. And having that many vendors as an event, you know, it was organized. We did have permits and things like that. However, it was, you know, we weren't too stringent about who had business licenses and things like that. That's up to the individual businesses. However, considering Eureka's past reputation of, you know, being scary and unwalkable and, you know, I'll kind of reference back to some of the comments from earlier in the evening in regards to safety on the Plaza. Having events and having vendors and people around does a lot to attract new life and new, you know, culture into an area. You know, you think about the stark difference between the Plaza during the farmer's market versus the Plaza really any other time. So, you know, maybe one consideration would be for these permits, not necessarily to give them some teeth, but to give them an incentive, could be, you know, any permit fees for this kind of automatically grants you access into some sort of event that maybe Arcata Main Street could partner with the city in doing in order to kind of generate more activity on the Plaza that promotes businesses and also just more neighborhood connection. Thank you.
Thank you. No more online public comment. Okay, we have a motion. And did we get a second? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes. And we have our last opportunity for our public comment. And this time is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. So this is nothing that we covered on the agenda today. And please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council may be limited to three minutes with them. Yep, they're limited to three minutes. And if you are in person and wanting to give public comment, please line up at the podium. If you are online, please raise your hand on the Zoom webinar or press star nine now if you are on the phone.
So to close my talk here tonight, I just appreciate all the decisions and issues that come before you on a bi-weekly basis at these meetings. And they're all really important issues. But the overall issue is, you know, we won't have Airbnbs, and we won't have sidewalks and all. If we don't really seriously start looking at the big picture, the overview of what's happening in our world, and bringing it down, narrowing it down to the city of Arcata and the streets and the parks and the bay and the houses and the sewage system and all that kind of thing. So with climate change and the climate crisis, I was on recent tours on the Matikit, talking about sea level rise. I've been reading articles in the Time Standard about what's going on in our geology. And we really need to, I really would like for the city council to take the climate issue seriously and address it on a regular basis and let me know what's going on with the Regional Climate Action Plan. And we really need to change our ways. We're going to have to. And, you know, we got to start now because we didn't start yesterday. And we can't postpone. That's the big P, postponing a lot of these things that can no longer be postponed. So please, please, please make climate something that is on the agenda all the time. And you're talking about it and letting us know what we need to do to help make things livable for us in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Hi.
Good evening, Arcata City Council members. Earlier in my previous public comment, I mentioned about unity between marginalized communities. I want to go extend that topic, particularly on the LGBT community. As a queer individual myself, I think it's very important from some type of educational LGBT workshops for the city of Arcata so that way residents can know more on the history and also just gain more knowledge of, like, representation and inclusivity within the community. As I mentioned before, last year there was anti-LGBT attacks and rhetoric. And I think that, you know, there can be more progress within the city that we can try to do so members can be more open-minded and try to have more value towards members within that community. I also think that I don't know specifically if the city honors the Day of Silence or Pride Months, or, you know, does any educational awareness on that to the community members. But I also think that if that's not the case, I think that the, down the line, I would hope the Arcata City Council can consider honoring the Day of Silence and also awareness for Pride Months. You know, I only mention this because I feel like members within the LGBTQ community, whether they're youth or elderly, should feel comfortable enough to express their identity and express who they are. They shouldn't feel uncomfortable to do so. So I would just strongly encourage you all to find ways to be inclusive and honor that community in whatever way possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And we appreciate that you waited three and a half hours to finish your public comment. So we, it's important to you. We understand that. All right, our first online public comment is call in user four. Go ahead, call in user. Can you unmute? Let me see, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Can you hear me?
We can. Yep, go ahead.
Hello? Okay. Hi, I'm calling in regards to Councilmember Watson's conduct online, which I view as wholly bizarre and worth scrutiny. I wanted to draw the council and community's attention to the website, arcatatruth.com. This is a purported news website that is run by a person claiming to be going by the name of Delilah Goldstein. I wholeheartedly believe that this person is Councilmember Brett Watson affecting a fake identity to push forward his agenda outside of the purview of the Arcata City Council. It is a sham website that has no journalistic value whatsoever and is a literal mouthpiece for Councilmember Watson's gripes. In particular, the article titles, quote, "Some Arcata City Council Candidates Did Not Submit Fundraising Forms Contains Such Specific Information That Only Someone Who Ran For The Council Would Have Those Details." Again, Delilah Goldstein does not exist. Her Facebook profile page has one picture and few friends, Councilmember Watson being one of them. When you reverse image search the picture, again, the only picture, the only thing that comes up is USA Girl 4. And indeed, no single person that works in news in Humboldt County has heard of her. From what I gather from local community members, this is not the only hollow account that Councilmember Watson operates on social media sites like Facebook. It's just a great microcosm of Councilmember Watson's behavior over the years, and it's just so bizarre and embarrassing. Brett, you need to resign like yesterday. This is really, really sad now. Thank you.
All right. Next online speaker is Raylina. Go ahead, Raylina.
Hi. I wanted to just make a comment to the council in regards to the upcoming gateway plan and updates to the general plan. In regards to, you know, this being so soon to be passed, you know, it's just there. It's almost there. I would ask the council to consider passing a temporary moratorium on new construction. You know, it seems like it would be prudent to consider the new regulations that we will be passing for our city in regards to construction that is being proposed to ensure that it's going to benefit and serve our community well into the future and not just temporarily five to three years from now. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. There's no more online public comment. Sorry, lots of things to follow up on. So that's making notes on, which has now caused me to, here it is, lose the agenda. But I know we're at the end. So now it is time for, I don't think we have any other staff updates, so we will do council member updates. So Vice Mayor Schaefer, do you have any updates?
Sure, a couple things. I know I said before that the Iblock Party was a great success, but they did get their financials back. And it was actually, I think from what I read in the email, it was the most successful one ever, which is super awesome. Also, I'll add just a general energy update, but RCEA is very involved with the offshore wind energy and all that, but that the lease sale announcements have kind of gone out. And so now that will kind of open it up for, to see who actually is going to get involved and build these things. December 6. But they said it went out. Oh, December 6. It's coming very soon. Nancy corrected me. I know, I was like reading the email here. But again, it's just exciting movement forward on the wind energy front. So we're ahead of the pack. So we're, we're ahead of the pack.
I'm, I'm gonna go next just because I want to just add to the offshore wind. And our community is working together from all aspects, from tribal folks to elected leaders to executive directors, all kinds of folks working together as a team to try to really push for the best community benefits package possible that we can get as a community. So that's pretty cool to see everybody coming together to try to work on that. And the only other thing I had was we did hire an executive director for Arcata Main Street, which is a big win and success. So her name is Brandy Wheeler, and we're very excited to have her on board. And that should make a real difference for the organization. I just want to commend the, since I came on to council, it's been about two years. And I think that we've, Main Street has been without a director from that whole time. So it's been held together by a small board of volunteers. So it should, we should be able to pick up and really get some things going. And I'm excited about that.
Yeah, shout out to the Main Street Board and a shout out to Shoshana because she's done amazing things too. As long as we're talking about energy, we might as well talk about garbage. And just let you know that SB 1383 will be before the council soon. I mean, as we're talking about impact to the climate, I think that it is a hugely important thing. The food waste that goes into our landfills, the methane that that emits is on par with all the greenhouse gases. So I'm really looking forward to bringing that to Arcata.
Well, I have redec coming up on Monday. And I've already, and HTA, we're just moving ahead with HTA. It's amazing when I think back and I was serving on there in 2006 in that era of time and how they have really transformed themselves and done so many amazing things and how they're looking at how to connect our county out of the county. And I think that's going to happen. We're going to be able to see our buses connecting up to Mendocino. And they're already, they're going up, you know, they have an experiment going up into Orleans. And, and it's pretty amazing what they've been able to do. So they'll see how we get ourselves interconnected throughout the region. So I'm very impressed with the executive director and his vision and what he's been able to do.
You know, I was just thinking of one more thing, and I'm sorry because I know it's super late. But I know that I've been reading a lot about the single use takeaway ordinance that's coming up in January 2023. And I know people have a lot of questions. I'm not have to speak to it now, but maybe update at the next council meeting about what that looks like. I know people concerned about food safety and what it looks like bringing your own container into a restaurant and what that whole process looks like. So it'd be great to get some clarification. It doesn't need to be tonight, but.
Sure, I'd be happy to update you at the next council meeting. Letters have gone out to all the potential businesses that would be affected. That is ordinance that had been suspended during the pandemic and that is now coming back online even a couple of years later than we had hoped. But, but yeah, we'd be happy to do an update.
Thank you. And before we get, go ahead, council member Watson.
Yeah, I just respond to the caller. You know, it's, it's interesting that a person accusing me of, you know, having some kind of anonymous identity doesn't choose to identify themselves, you know, in their comment, they choose to remain anonymous. I don't think I've ever created a fake profile ever. I definitely don't have time for that. I don't even run my own social media. I have a volunteer that does it. I did talk to a young woman named Delilah several weeks ago that said she did a public records request to the city and got campaign filing information from the candidates. I did answer her questions. I didn't, you know, she sent me a copy of the article. I did not know she had a website. And yeah, so, you know, I mean, unless somebody has some actual evidence, I mean, this is like my story for this last year, right? Or like baseless accusations of things with no evidence supporting them. So I'm just kind of used to it at this point. But yeah, you know, if you got some evidence, if you think there's something illegal, report it to the police, you know. And, but yeah, you know, if you're just trying to turn me down, I mean, nothing really phases me anymore. So, yeah, that's what I have to say about that. And then my question is, I guess a question and a statement. So, you know, we recognize that we did not receive any reports from HDL who analyzes our tax revenues for over a year. And it took several weeks and I actually had to do a public records request to my own city to get the reports, which is really unusual because it's public information. And so when I did get the reports, there was only three quarters there. The last couple of quarters were missing. And it shows, this is, you know, my report. It looks like that from quarter three, 2021 to quarter one, 2022, the city's tax revenues have taken a very steep decline by about 30%. That's huge, 30% of our tax revenues, which is like our biggest input into our general fund. So, and also this information was not provided to the council when we were considering our budget. It wasn't mentioned in the budget report. So, you know, I know the staff, you know, it's usually the city manager that gets that information and provides it to the council. So, you know, I just, I'm just wondering, you know, how, how did this happen? How can we prevent it in the future? You know, why didn't we get this information when we were making our budget? And other than that, that's all I got. Thanks a lot.
So I, I have a question I wanted to ask with the.
Well, just quickly, if I get a, is anybody to answer my question? Or just no answer? It's okay if you don't want to answer.
Well, yeah, I'm happy to add, I, we are not seeing a 30% decline in our sales tax. So if you want to, I think the, the delay in getting those reports to you was based on communication protocols that are in place right now and needing to go through attorneys to get information transmitted. And that during the pandemic, HDL no longer was coming up and making visits and bringing hard copies that typically just went to your mailboxes. So we've corrected that and we'll be sending those out. We'll get them from them electronically and we'll get those out to you in your email boxes that way.
Okay, so yeah.
But we're not seeing a decline in 30%. So we should ascertain what you're looking at, make sure that, that it. And, and to answer the question about the next two quarters, we get tax information. It does take a couple of quarters in a rear, so those are still coming forth.
Okay, so yeah, just to clarify, the rest of the council did get the reports and I didn't. And, you know, the council did establish.
We don't have them.
No, they haven't.
You're, you're actually the only one that got them.
In fact, it's just gone through that.
So that's a really big problem, right? Like, why doesn't the entire council have them? And the, the council did establish these procedures. And so what you're describing, it would originate with you. It would go to your attorney, to my attorney.
Well, you know, can we, can we go on? Because you already got yours and one day we'll get ours and that'll be nice. But interest, but I wanted to just ask.
So you're cutting, so you're cutting off, Alex? All right, let's just move on, that's okay.
Well, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. What else do you want to say about this?
I mean, I, you know, it's just, why aren't we discussing this? Why doesn't any of the council care?
We all, they all said they didn't get it. You know, I haven't been here that long. I've only been here since July and I didn't do your goal settings, et cetera. So I'm not part of that. But I do, I am curious about a couple of things. But I can just sit here and wait till you've finished dealing whatever you have to deal with?
No, I mean, I, you know, I feel like you guys have answered the question. You know, I'm just, it's okay. Like, I'm the only one that's concerned with our tax generation, our tax revenues in the city.
Yeah, this isn't on the agenda for us to discuss. And also, you know, we went over, we went over our sales tax information in detail at the budget study session that you weren't at. So there we go. Okay, you, you missed numerous meetings in that time period. And just, it, it's not worth squabbling about. You got the papers that you were asking for. I'd like to just move on and I know the rest of us would too. It's getting late.
So I have a question I'd still like to ask. And I was thinking about, we were going to have, we Alder Grove Industrial Park, and we have some lots that we've had since the early 1970s. And I'm wondering how we're proceeding with those. We were going to get some appraisals, et cetera. How, is that happening? How's that, when do we think we'll hear back on that?
It is scheduled right now for your next council meeting to start that surplus land process.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, definitely. And one other thing I wanted to mention is, and maybe somebody out there actually has an office, is that our police chiefs would like to be, have an auxiliary office downtown somewhere. So, you know, I was actually thinking about the Hotel Arcata and they came and they spoke about their broken window and being harassed. And years ago, that used to be a real estate office. And the owner of that real estate office, and the stairs are still there, would go up to this little balcony. And then he could see everything that was going on downstairs with all his realtors, et cetera. And I'm wondering if that, that could be an office that could be available for the chief on a temporary basis. So I'm going to reach out to that because I started looking around. I'm just putting this out in case someone in the downtown has a office space that they could make available to him. And then he'd have his police car downtown also. And that was a request somewhere along the line I saw or heard that it would be nice that we could have a police car occasionally downtown. But they don't like to leave their cars, maybe this is Julie Fulkerson. They don't like to leave their cars downtown unam, unt, unattended. I was gonna say unmanned and womaned because they can get vandalized. So, but he's interested in, in making that contact in the downtown. So just putting out, maybe somebody has an office and they're willing to make that work. And I've been looking around, so far I haven't found one. Okay, well, I have other things on my list, but I'm just, and I'm wondering if we're going to have an opportunity to talk about the trail, trail systems that are of significance and issues in Arcata like the one in Westwood. So somewhere that maybe that would be an interesting topic to have. Because there obviously are others. And then I was at the foam meeting this week and they were talking about the gate closing out at De Marsh. And it, is it closing, is it not closing? They were interested in that and when that was going to start, now that I'm a liaison out there. And also for this year, this is just an aside here, you got me talking. Goblet Days has been thinking about how we could work with Audubon and also with Foam. And this year Foam and Goblet Days are going to work in tandem and also Audubon. So it's going to be nice to see these three groups. Not that Foam hasn't always done things for, with Goblet Days, but it's going to be more of an interactive kind of system. Okay, thank you.
So before we close, I heard two possible future like agenda items come up. So one was, you know, like a trail update on maintenance and how, how, you know, how that works, what gets chosen for that. Do, do we have consensus on that, opinions on if that should go on the agenda or not? I'm fine with that.
Sure.
Council member Watson? I think that was something you wanted, that was something you wanted.
Yeah. And then would they, like, where would they fit in with the past agenda items I've requested that haven't been agendized yet?
I don't know about that, but I have one other. And we had it addressed today and it's been addressed constantly. And that is homelessness. And we've been getting a lot of, I'm, I'm sure you two have, Brett, but we've been getting a lot of letters and trying to figure out how to deal with it. And I, in some ways, I don't know if we'll ever be able to deal with it because it's such a serious issue. But I don't know if we want to have anything to talk about on that issue or not because, you know, we can only provide housing through one means or another. And maybe the fortune of money that came in, that would be one of the pre-development costs that we could help with for homelessness. But I just don't know what we're going to do. And Eureka, I know is having the same issue.
Since there's a lot in that, my suggestion would be possibly in the future to have a study session with the police department and do some brainstorming on ideas of how to move forward. Yeah, but we, but we're definitely going to need, we're going, we're going to need specifics. This is a huge topic, so.
Maybe providers too?
Yeah, I, I personally would just really rather address this at an earlier time because I'm, I think it's a big issue and we do, we do need to get things on the agenda and discussions going, but I think we need to be pretty strategic about it. So it's, and then there was one other. Meredith asked for a suggestion of.
The single use, single use container.
Right, no, that seems like a timely recap because that's scheduled to happen in January. How do we feel about that?
Yeah, and it's been all over, you know, city social media and everything like that. So it would be good just to get the update because I know many of us have not, you know, didn't hear about it pre-COVID, so.
Okay, and I would, I think that would be good to put on. Okay, it seems like we have consensus for that. Okay, with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.